We order, stand and say the pledge. All the things to require on the 16th. This is a topic which assesses on issue under that and then this will be the 14th justice. Roll call.
Dan Flacco. Here. Carsonson, H, here. Madigan, here. Dr. Chomsky.
Here.
Turner, H, absent. Cardy.
Here. First, here now. Alright, um, announcements or correspondence, Howard.
The answer is no.
That's it?
No.
Just no?
No announcements or correspondence. I'll, I'll mention more about the public works facility. People that have contacted me to look at the plans and to work with the staff report. But in general, no.
Alright. Ready for approval for the July 2nd plan of the ZONPZB meeting minutes.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second. Alright, roll call.
Dan Flacco. Epstein. Carsonson. Yes. H. Yes. Madigan. Yes. Dr. Chomsky.
Yes.
Cardy.
Yes. Alright, please pass down the list of what we have. People will sign up. I'm going to say most of these are all regarding the public works. We'll look to the board then to see if we can move. Number four to number one, pull up on, on public comments. Because they're all addressing the public works facility. And I will bring you up at that time. Ready for a motion to do so?
A motion to H for text amendment impressions count. To our next item on the agenda. Second.
Roll call.
Dan Flacco. Yes. Carsonson. Yes. H. Yes. Madigan. Yes. Dr. Chomsky.
Yes.
Cardy.
Yes. Alright. That being said, um. PZB two five oh eight, consideration of text amendment for the village of zoning ordinance. Title ten, amendment section, uh, ten dash ten dash three. A table one to allow a business support service within the downtown Antioch form-based code area. In the village core, BC district, uh. Transitional core, district and main street transition, uh, district as a permanent land use.
Um, before, before I get started, I'm going to recuse myself from this conversation. Due to potential professional convert of interest.
And I would ask you to please, if we could, have you remove yourself from the room so we can continue with some.
Absolutely.
Going up front, we'll call you back over the.
Sounds good.
Howard.
Um, hello, good evening. My name is Howard, I'm the community development director for the village of Antioch. Uh, removing PZB twenty five dash eight to be up in the list. Because of this, uh, uh. Public works facility is going to take some time, which is natural. The reason why it was listed in this manner is because I had to advertise in the newspaper and with the butter letter, so I had to. Create, you know, the other three in sequence, so I understand the reason for moving it upwards. Alright, so this is a relatively simple text amendment. Uh, Randy Nolan, who's, who's here.
Here.
Uh, he's the business owner of an impressions count. He does printing, signs and apparel. He is currently located at nine oh seven Main Street in Antioch. He reached out to me several months ago, and this was a conversation we had going back and forth. He's in the process of possibly moving. And the situation in his, for his businesses. He was classified in a different zoning classification. Which kind of disallowed him from staying in the downtown if he chose to move. To a different location, building wise in the downtown area. So he was categorized as limited manufacturing. And this is a conversation that I had with Randy, the property owner, business owner, sorry, and with the attorney. And we were going back and forth, and I presented the attorney. Um. In our discussion. The, uh, the North American industry classification system. To see where Randy falls in, and he falls in. Under a use that's related to printing and related support services. Printing, in a general term. Uh, commercial printing, business support. He does a little bit of everything. If you need a small sign, he creates you a sign. If he needs to create a banner or a poster, he does that. If you need hundred copies of a letter, he does that. So the conversation that I had with our law firm here was he's not considered a limited industrial. Manufacturing, but more of a support services business. So the zoning, the zoning definition, we actually have the zoning definition that talks about this. And I'm going to read it for everybody here. So it is defined as business support services is defined as establishment or places of business. Engaged in the sale, rental, repair of office equipment, supplies, materials. Or the provision of services used by office, professional and service establishments. So the zoning definition kind of gives you an idea. That this is more in tune to limited manufacturing. It also goes on to say typical uses include office and equipment, supply firms. Small business machine, repair shop, convenience printing, which Mr. Nolan does. Copying establishment, as well as temporary labor services. He's not an employment agency, and I get that. But this is the definition that the attorney and I decided to use for the tax amendment. So in my staff report, I presented section ten dash ten dash three. Letter A, table one, that shows you the five zones in the downtown. Downtown Antioch, which is on page two of my staff report. Now, if, if you look under commercial retail and office, naturally automobiles, repair and body shops are not allowed, which is fine. Anything with a drive-through into downtown or area would require a special use. Eating, drinking establishments are permitted, except for one of the zones. Financial institution, lodging, office, administrative, professional, medical. Recycling, not recycling, but personal service, recycling, retail. Naturally, we don't allow for any industrial use in the downtown. The only time that you see limited manufacturing, product showroom, research services, warehouse, distribution. Is under the BP zone, which we're not looking at this tonight. And then you have public and civic uses, and then you have residential. So in the discussion with, with the senior administration with the law firm. We decided to propose this business support services as a permitted use. As read in the introduction tonight. Uh, it would be permissible in the downtown Antioch form-based code area. Especially in the village core, the BC district, transitional core TC. District and Main Street Transitional, MT district. The reason why I picked three out of five, because these are the districts that are walkable and pedestrian friendly. The other two are more commercial oriented. The reason why I bring this is because Mr. Nolan has mentioned to me that he receives a good amount of foot traffic. People walking to his shop, not driving but walking. Uh, and he does support services for us, the public entity and the private entities. So it was to, I think to our advantage as a municipality, is to allow this as a permitted use. Uh, the only, only caveat that I have here would be. I would also support under the village core. For downtown or Main Street area. I would also support the, uh, as a permitted use, but also with the asterisk. So the asterisk says basically business support services, if the board decides to approve it. Personal services, office, administrative, professional, medical uses. Shall equate to no more than an aggregate of twenty eight percent of uses allowed. At any given time in the village core district on Main Street, Route eighty-three between Lake and Orchard. The reason why that asterisk is there is because we're trying to promote more retail through the establishment versus. Law office, real estate offices, things like this. So since Mr. Nolan's already in that district, if he moves to, let's say, another building on Main Street. It's pretty much the same use that's just being transferred on one property to another. So I don't think it would be a detriment to the municipality to have this, uh, permitted use. I would have to follow the asterisk, especially in the downtown village core. And the other two, that's not required. So my staff report pretty much talks about that. So anything in red ink are the changes that I proposed. So an alphabetical order after automobile repair and body. I would propose to put business support services. The three Ps under the column of BCTC and MT. And then afterwards is drive-through, and then in red ink is the first three words after the asterisk, business support services. So this is my finding, this is my presentation to the board. Uh. I'm supporting this application on behalf of the business owner. Because, uh, under our current code, I would have to represent the person. He can't apply for a testimony. Hence the reason why I'm here representing Mr. Nolan and other business owners that might pursue something similar.
Okay, um. Is there anybody else in the audience who has anything to speak towards or for or against this proposal that's being presented? Alright, any comments we have going forward?
Howard, I, what, what percentage are we at right now for the downtown core, the service related, you know?
We're less than twenty percent.
Okay.
Yeah, because if you look at it, it's between the two major streets.
Sure.
Main street. And we have more retail and restaurant services with eat here cafe versus law office, real estate office. Anything that it wasn't produced, I want to say like the sales tax.
Mm-hmm.
The, the, I have no way of saying it.
So we're sitting at around like twenty percent, and it would be permitted use, so if impressions count were to move to another. Whoever were to move in there, if they want, if they continued as a service oriented business, it would be a permitted use.
Right, because, and like in his situation would be a wash. Let's say if he wants to stay on Main Street.
Yeah.
Wants to move to, um, two buildings over, it's a wash because it's only one building to the main.
Sure. And the new occupants of that. Previous location, would they need to come for the village, put a permitted use, or if that would stay as a service oriented?
No, i- i- it would go back to being a regular use, that if someone wants to open up a restaurant, that they could apply for it.
Right.
Either as a permitted or special use. It depends on the use, because if you look at the. If you look at the use table that I created here, you'll see. So typically when a person speaks to me, it's like, oh, I want to open up the eating and drinking establishment of the village core. It's a permitted use.
Right.
So under the permitted use, they would apply for a building permit. Uh, hopefully soon, permit to review the business license aspect of it. To review the square footage that's being proposed, the business plan, parking that's associated, and the use itself.
So it would be a permitted use as long as it's not above the twenty eight percent, correct? Okay. That's the only question I had. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Carsonson.
We're, uh, we're not changing the percentage at all, okay? And then the only reason we have to do this is because. Currently they are manufacturing, and that's not permitted.
Right, he's considered, especially by my predecessor, um, Michael Gerogan, he was considered limited manufacturer.
Yeah, okay.
And going through that exercise with the attorney here, I realized he's more of like, let's say a FedEx Kinko. Versus creating like stamped, uh, machinery, parts or stuff like that. Or like signs that are made out of steel and stuff like that. He doesn't do that.
Yeah, okay.
H, fish?
No comments.
Madigan?
No questions.
So before, before you decide to make the, the decision on this matter, uh. You notice in this board hearing being for tonight, the findings of fact were created as separate documents. Now, what's kind of interesting with our code on your zoning, there's no findings of fact for tax amendment. But our attorney said that I would have to read this to the public, read it in front, just to restate the reason why this should be allowed. So I'm just going to read the five points, and I'm going to do that, the same thing for the other tax amendment. For the civic use for the public. Public works facility, so just bear with them. So the first point, under the findings of fact for reviewing it, for just the text amendment. Would be that the amendment promotes the public health, safety, comfort, convenience and general welfare. And complies with the policies and official plans in the village. The answer is yes. Why? In our comprehensive plan, we talked about creating a diversified downtown area. That's pedestrian and transportation friendly. As he stated to me, he gets a lot of business, people just walking inside his shop. Asking questions and possibly ordering the materials for him. Number two, the trend of development in the area of the subject property is consistent with the requested amendment. He's a support service. He's going to be supporting other businesses. He's not going to be stealing business. But he's going to be providing support, so we find that as a, as a positive. Number three, the requested zoning classification permits uses which are more suitable than other uses permitted under the existing zoning classification. He answers yes again. Like I mentioned, he's going to provide services to what? Offices, administrative, professional, possibly medical, possibly personal services. And possibly eating and drinking. Someone needs a, a sandwich board sign, he could probably create one. So he's supporting the businesses that are down in our Main Street area. Number four, the property cannot yield a reasonable use if permitted only under the conditions allowed under the existing zoning classification. And the answer is yes. He would be forced to move elsewhere, and he might lose his, his core business while people walk into his business. He has to locate to a traditional, non-downtown form-based code zone. So that's going to impact him, and it will impact us too, because he might leave, not, not stay in Antioch anymore. Finally, number five, the amendment, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. And will not be substantial detriment to the adjacent properties, or in this case, ruraling properties. And the answer is no. He's, he's, he's already there, he's been there for many years. He's going to possibly be living somewhere within the three districts zone that I mentioned. Uh, he's complimentary, he's already in town, he's an established business. So it would not create a negative for other businesses, because he's providing a support service. So those are the five conditions, let's say, for a tax amendment.
Thank you. Alright. Ready for a motion to approve PCB two five oh eight, that the five conditions has presented?
I'm in motion to approve PCB twenty five dash zero eight, consideration of a text amendment to the village's zoning ordinance title ten. Lending section ten dash ten dash three A, table one, to allow for business support services within the downtown form-based code area in village core. District transitional core district and Main Street Transitional District as a permitted use.
Uh, with the five conditions as listed?
Yes. Thank you.
Second. Good. Roll call.
Dan Flacco. Yes. Carsonson. Yes. H. Yes. Madigan. Yes. Cardy.
Yes. Okay, thank you very much, um. We'll put this forward to the, uh, village board and for their approval.
Yeah, and this message is, is for Mr. Nolan. So what happens here now? We provided a favorable recommendation to the village board. So our next village board meeting will be on August thirteenth, thirteen. We're going to try and do the Cal and the second meeting, the same meeting. To help you out, possibly looking for somewhere, signing with these, purchasing something, so we don't hold you any further. Thank you very much. You're very welcome.
Thank, thank you for, uh, presenting. You're good to go. Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, alright. Um, let's, uh, bring Adam back in from out front. You can go get him, Howard. Chance? Thank you. Is there a counter? Are you on it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know you are. Okay. To reflect that Adam Zakarchewski is back in the room and part of our discussion for the next three items. Um, new business PCB two five oh five, consideration of text amendment to the village zoning ordinance title ten. Modification of ten dash five dash one D one. Uh, to allow civic use as a special use within the estate district zoned table of you, of land uses. Howard, you're up.
Okay, so before we jump into, uh, PCB twenty five dash zero five, I just wanted to bring to the board's notice. The people have reached out to me about this application, and I'll just read the, the names of the people when they contacted me. Either we spoke on the telephone, or people came to visit me at the office to look over the plans. So the first one is Jerry Ellison, who's here, Republic, Stuart Walsh. Uh, Thomas Lasco. And Kathy Cole. So four people have reached out to me, either the telephone or in person. So I wanted to bring that as part of the announcements or correspondence. But for this application, of these three applications, that's going to be heard in, in, um, tangent, maybe all together.
Thank you.
Alright, so again, thi- this is going to be a long one, but I think this was the easiest way to break it down. To break it down to three applications. The first one is going to be the text amendment, which now I'm going to go into details. The second one is going to be a special use, site plan review with two waivers. Then the third application for tonight that's related with public works will be the application for the variance for two variances. So for the special use in variance applications, you'll see the separate findings of facts that are attached behind my stamp report. This was a format that we decided several months ago to go with, instead of being integrated into the staff report. To be separate documents. So if someone has a question or they want to restate the findings, then we just jump to that document. So as we move forward and as this goes to the village board, I'm going to be submitting my village report, which is my staff report. With the supporting materials and the findings of facts. That's going to be included in either the ordinance or the resolution. Typically, site plans generate a resolution. Special use variances, uh, generate, uh, ordinances. So let me jump into twenty five dash zero five. So. The municipality has a property that's located at twenty North Avenue, formerly. Two two eight two one West North Avenue in Antioch. This is a vacant piece of property that the village has owned for a while. And this is where the village decided to, uh, create a public works facility. So when I heard this, I said, well, you know, we're going to have to change, you know, change. The use of the zone to allow for this as a special use, to be reviewed as a special use, as a site plan review. And then the associated variances with the site plan and application. So what I proposed here was to allow for an existing use that we have in the downtown village core, which is civic uses. Which means anything that is public related, it could be public works, it could be the village hall, it could be the police station, it could be a park. Those are all civic uses. So the property, this very large property, this vacant, it's located in the estate zoning, which is a residential district. This is our large zone district. Typically in this district, you don't have, um, public water, the public sewer. So lots are usually large for, for getting water from the well, well water, and to also have a septic sewer system. So when I looked at this, I said, well, this is a good opportunity to allow for the civic use within this zone. Because first, the property that the village owns is very large. Second, it's located in an area that's going to be providing easy access to residential communities that are in that area, in that quadrant. And other places throughout the municipality. So currently, we don't allow for civic uses in the estate zone, either as a permitted or special use. The reason we're here tonight for a text amendment is to allow for it, this use as a special use. So similar to the application we just heard moments ago, I provided the zoning use table for the estate zone. And again, in red ink, I proposed an alphabetical order for the civic use with the pencil that under the table of uses. So it would come after agricultural nursery, then comes civic uses as a special use, then comes conservation club. Now, in my staff report, I talked about, you know, the benefit of having this. I also like to also mention that in most municipalities, right? You have other types of civic uses in a residential zone. You could have a school, an elementary school, a high school. Typically, those are allowed as a special use residential zone. So I'm treating this like, you know, it's a similar use. This is something that would be allowed. It would be conducive to the residential character of that area. But it would also go through a special use, just like a school or like a religious institution like a church. So for me, I don't see anything negative about proposing this as a special use. So now I allow for the, for the board to ask questions and stuff like that. I'm going to also do the findings of fact for this, because this is a text amendment once again.
Alright, so. We're going to go to the list of public comments this time. Anybody who wishes to speak to this effect on this particular proposal, please stand, raise your right hand, be sworn in.
Keep in mind, this is for the text amendment, not the site plan review or special use of variance.
Well, I'm sure we can swear them in for all three at this time. Alright. Any, any, any of the three for this item will swear you in right now. So stand, raise your right hand, be sworn in.
Swear of self-truth, the whole truth, and not the bulk truth.
Okay, first person on the list, uh, Jerry. Would like to come up and give us your comments on this particular portion of the text amendment. Civic use.
I would like to thank Howard, that he did take the time out of his busy schedule to meet with the public school, for the whole project. Uh, the only question I would have on the text amendment, Howard, when I raised it with Howard was. Just trying to understand how, how much of the village is state district, where it's at. And that, once you make the text amendment for the state district property, semi-state district property, village. So that would be one thing that you better understand, how much, how much of the village is on the state.
Thanks. Yeah. Sorry, when you do come up and speak in the mic, please state your name and your address so we have it for the record. Um. Sorry, we've got you written down here, we'll head into the meeting now. Kathy. Worthen.
Kurt.
Kurt.
Uh, I'd like to hold my comments.
Uh, I'd like to hold my comments until the site.
Okay. Steve Uberts?
Uberts? Yeah, I'm gonna wait. My question has been answered.
Okay. Julie?
I'm Arizona.
Okay. Howard?
Gordon Rowley.
Okay. Please go into the mic, state your name and your address. Thank you.
Richard Gordon Rowley, eighteen West Peg, Antioch. My question is, why do we want a utilities building or whatever consists of in that particular area? Uh, we have all of this already in this town. Why do we wanna move what we have there? That's basically my question.
Okay. Thank you very much. Right, Rich and Cheryl?
Observer.
Okay. Mike? Please go up and state your name and your address.
Mike Long, forty five, Narielons. My property is directly previous to this proposal. My question is, I am very concerned once you start moving the grounds around in there. Uh, there is a water problem on this side of the town, subdivisions. I have a sump pump that never ever quits, but my house was built there. There were holes that were dug, water stood in there and never left, and there's been a lot of houses that had floodways. It's some concern that there could have a major water problem there. Also, I'm worried about the noise created, extra light shining to my backyard, my house, uh, those type of things.
All right, thank you. And Stuart?
I'm Stuart Walsh, eleven seventy six, Nava Lunt Drive, Antioch. Uh, across the street from the proposed site. Um, two things. Uh, in two thousand and five, the village purchased a property with one hundred point five thousand dollars of hard funds. Uh, why are they taking away this stuff? It just, I don't understand how the money works in government, you know, especially the good village of Antioch. Uh, well, somehow the district could reimburse for, you know, whether it has a line item in the village budget or not. The other is why can't the village of Antioch wait on this construction of the public works facility until it can be located up Grim Road as originally planned? I know I always uh canceled up Grim Road because Grim Road project was uh canceled due to funding. But why, why can't they just wait, put it out there like they planned on the first time?
Thank you very much. Okay, this time we'll start our comments up here. And Miss Sanford, will you have anything to add?
I know.
Scarsen?
I'm, I've been on the board for maybe seven or eight years. And I've never had a citizen ask me anything related except for this. And my neighbors are also concerned about this. Um, traffic and flooding and uh, I, I think they all thought this was gonna be the, this was gonna be like a park something before with like recreational activity, I think. Um, so they were amused about this. I also understand why we need this. Um, Dennis's facility today is not what it should be, and I think back to those points of why we have these meetings or and why we have these public hearings and the village does need a new facility for public works. Um, so I'm, I guess I'm just saying I'm conflicted on this.
Okay. Spish.
Um, I don't think I have a specific yet. Um, so I, I, I guess I was wondering kind of the same things with the gentleman said. Is there a reason why the property that's over by Grim Road wasn't being utilized? Um, and then I'm also concerned about the noise. Uh, so again, what, what would the hours be and so forth and um the fencing? They need the chain link with the slats. I just, I don't think that will help with the noise. And you can still, you know, see through those, not necessarily, obviously, just without the slats, but um but I think if you had a wooden fence, a solid wooden fence, it would help with the noise.
Okay, um.
So Mr. McCarty, are we just talking about the first item here, the
We are.
the text amendment right now? Because I would have a lot more questions if we were talking to the other items.
That's, that's where I was, I'm right back to the text amendment.
Okay.
Just reminding us to, to, to focus on the text amendment this time for civic use within special use for the estate district. So.
How, okay, so how many other subdivisions do we have in Antioch that would be considered estates that would have property available to fit something under the civil uses?
So I, I just put up the zoning map that's from the village website. I counted between ten and thirteen estate zoning areas. Uh, the bigger ones are already populated. The key used to have in your single family homes.
Can you, Howard, remind us, the estate, what color is that on the map that we're looking at here?
It's the light green. So you have one in the southwest, you have it at the northeast. You have a little bit south towards the middle of the map. Uh, so let me jump back to this, there's a Nelson's question because he does have a valid point. So typically, when there's an annexation that refers here in the village, it always goes to the lowest zoning residential. So whoever comes in as an annexed property automatically becomes an estate zone. Depends on the annexation, depends on what's being proposed, if it's a business, if it's residential. The zoning is gonna probably change as part of the text amendment process. So typically, when you have estate zone, it's because it's relatively new, came in. Usually doesn't have any public infrastructure, i.e. public water or sewer. So if you look at the, at my uh at the zoning map that I provided through the special use application, page eight, you'll see that this estate zone that's in question that we're talking about, public works facility is in a pocket of yellow, which is R two zoning, B two, which is commercial. Everything gray that's unincorporated Antioch. So that's the county township. So even this property is an anomaly because it probably came in as an estate zone through the annexation process. Now, if you notice, I have the former address and I have the new address. The reason why new address was created because that's our Antioch address. The one with the five digits, that's typically unincorporated. So as part of this application before it was heard at this point here, I wanted to go through the process of changing the address with all the different entities within Lake County and the police and fire services. So even though it was formally listed as that property, today is twenty North Avenue. So this is an anomaly, and this is an interesting property. Now, I can't answer the other questions that came from the other people. I call Dennis is here, the public works director, and he could probably answer more of the questions, why this side, why not the oil and property, what happened? But getting back to the first person, Mr. Nelson. The second, the second point to what he proposed is, if we allow for this use while we have other public utility or public civic uses coming in, then I think the answer is no. Most municipalities only have one public works facility. The municipality is investing in this property, you're investing for the long haul, and it's gonna be here for a very, very long time. The reason why they're moving from their current property on Haley Street is they just don't have the space. They're sharing it with the wastewater treatment plant. Half of their machineries, equipment, trucks are being stored outside. That's just damaging the vehicles, which are very expensive to begin with. The idea is to create a new public works facility that is large, water, but also away from congested areas. Because this one is the downtown village core area, downtown farm-based code. This is as far away as you can get. You're ready, you're unincorporated Antioch. You do have some subdivision, you also have a commercial strip. So me, speaking as a planner, person under zoning, this would be the ideal situation because you have a residential community that was established in the nineteen nineties. Across the street, you have farmland. On the other side, unincorporated, you're both farmland. You have a strip of B two where you have the uh, the VFW that's located in the strip that's commercial. And then you have behind that strip more residential. So as a planner, I look at this, this is an ideal site because you're away from a lot of congestion, you're a lot of, you're away from a lot of new development. Let's say over time, new houses get built, they're gonna get built after this public works and is approved. This is an active effect. So for zoning purposes, the question is typically estate zones, districts, they come in as part of the annexation process. Secondly, if they're gonna be subdivided as part of the PUD planning and development process, either developer or the municipality is gonna probably provide for utilities or what they're on TIF agreement or what have you. Second, there are not gonna be, you know, multiple village halls, multiple public works facility. We're not part of the school system, so we're not proposing anything like that. So the way I see it, this is kind of a one-off. You know, it's just one public facility at this location for many, many decades to come. So that's the only part that I can answer zoning-wise.
Okay, we'll get back to some questions. Do you have anything else?
Not right here.
Mr. Zakerchuski?
No, I think Howard answered kind of what I was thinking. I suppose my only concern is if it is all encompassing, then, you know, what happens down the road? You know, is a police station they wanna build out on one of the other ones or something and, and that sort of thing. So does that text amendment then open the village up to other live buildings or something? But with him saying, you know, it's kind of a one, one-off, I understand that the location does seem fitting, although I could understand the residents might be a little trepidatious about on public works in their vacuum.
National Sub, ever.
Every uh text amendment for each location and something that comes up within the village has its own hearing, has its own effect, and has its own cause and consequences. So each one will always come forward and before us as it's bringing road or presented. Uh, we always have the opportunity at that time to make our comments, changes, and or alterations approved or denied based on what's being presented to us at that time. Um, one thing I would like to ask Dennis is a question that came up was why this location versus Grim Road?
Thank you and good evening. Um, Grim Road was initially the location that we were looking at. We had designed Grim Road. In the process of doing the building design on a parcel that we would have subdivided the complete property and housed us there, we were also working on the re, the redesigning of Grim Road and re-aligning, which was proposed coming between body trap and Q and S four. Um, sewer, water, lift station, and the amount of money we're taking just to reroute Grim Road and get PW utilities plus any future businesses. Um, I think at that time, we were at ten or twelve million on top of what the public works facility was. Um, and no other parties interested in any parcels that we, we could sell on that. So.
Okay, so feasibly impossible for what we're doing with and, and financially not available for the consequences.
And we, we even, uh, we submitted for grant money through council mayors. I think, I think we requested four or five million dollars. It's still out there, but um, did not score well just due to vacant piece of property and all the variables that went into the construction of that, that roadway.
Also having another property that's already available for us to use.
Correct. Um, you know, we looked throughout the village, even before Grim Road. We roughly need six acres right now to, to uh have the building, detention basin, and then outside asphalt or concrete for us to have semis come in and drop off uh salt to our salt dome and so forth. So once you look at the village overall, there's not many pieces of property that will house six acres or more. Um, the village owns this property, so there's a win-win within have to go out and spend who knows how many millions to purchase this property, like industrial park. Um, that would be large enough for our facility.
Okay. Um, I think that's all I have this point for the text amendment for question.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes?
One of, um, the people in the public asked about when the parcel was purchased, that it was purchased by Parks?
Parks Room. Yeah.
Department, can someone speak to that?
As to the transfer of the land to being used for public works.
Yes.
Um, so the parks is, we don't have a park district or is not a separate text amendment. So the park is funded out of the general fund of the village. Uh, the park or the piece of property was purchased for the intention of an aqua center. At that time, the village shifted gears and spent a couple million at the existing pool. So ultimately, the purchase of the property, they went towards the renovation.
Okay.
Howard, I have, I have another question, I guess.
Miss Sanford?
Thank you. Um, so the, like, the, the text amendment is gonna apply to all of the light green state districts you mentioned.
Yeah.
Good portion of them are already populated, like, so what, what portion of the estate zoning is vacant? And that could this text amendment, perhaps, I mean, I know that you're saying that you don't anticipate any civic use coming into that, but if we approve this text amendment, it could, it could affect all of those vacant um state districts.
But each text amendment that coming forward would still have to go before us for special use, correct?
Right, it would be a special use, so we could.
So each one will be presented on its own basis.
Okay, and keep in mind that not only estate zone, district is owned by, it's held, a lot of its own private.
How many of them are owned by municipality, do you know? They're vacant?
I don't think there's any besides this property.
Besides this one?
That's it.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah. So the, the, this land came in for park use. It came in on the lowest zoned uh portion we had available for our village. The reason it came in under estate is because it was uh outside of our village and, and had no utilities to it. If it had utilities to it, it probably would have been brought in as our one. Maybe, yes, something a little different, but this, this particular property was outside of, so it was brought in as estate. So that it gave the opportunity after that timeframe for us to zone it later for the use that we're putting into it. Purchased by the village and then zoned later for its use that they hadn't placed. And it was supposed to be our aqua center, but that diverted and changed. We then remodeled our aqua center. That's what's being used. That's where the money went diverted to there.
Okay.
And, and just to, just to, you know, bring up this unique property, uh, there was discussion about possibly changing the zone, but it wouldn't work here because we wanna make this into a commercial zone. Because if we wanna make this into a commercial zone, then it would be like a pocket surrounded by residential. The B two zone that you have here is a strip of several properties on the zoning map and my special use application pack at page eight. That is okay, but when we start having one large lot that's zoned differently from other lots that are, let's say residential in this example. That's considered spot zoning, that's usually a dono, we wouldn't recommend to do it. So I looked at it, it's residential, it's residential, it's residential in a higher portion in the sense that doesn't have any public utilities. So someone purchases this will have to do very large lots to build homes. So they wouldn't be building like, you know, R nine zoning homes if they're not providing the utilities. They're just saying, we're just gonna get water from the ground and we're also gonna have a septic system going to the ground as well. You're not gonna have a lot of houses. So I looked at it as this is not an opportunity to change the physical zone of this property. Keep it as an estate zone, pause a text amendment as an added use that goes through the special use process. So let's say down the road, there's a new police station. It depends where the police station will go by going in the virtual area, by going in the state zone. It would still have to go through the special use site plan review process, similar to what public works systems. And the reason why this is a separate application, because they didn't want money to water, put it all as one application, but as seven. We're building each one independently. Without this one, the other two won't be heard.
Okay. Uh under, under the current uh set of circumstances, we've listened to an answer that talks about. What's going on with these uh text amendment? I'm looking forward to a motion to approve or deny the text amendment, PCB two five oh five.
Before we go there, I have to do the findings again.
I actually have one more question, so.
Scott.
Even um so let me think about how to ask this. So there's, there aren't any additional estate properties that the village owns, but are there other large five acre plus properties the village owns today?
I can answer, actually the Burn Road property is owned by the village, it's all the state. I'm not aware of any other parcels that would be of six acres, like said, you book. Um definitely not owned by the village, but if it was private party, then if it was available. And close to town, we we not only have to serve all the way out to the IDID, that's real park. But our, our main population is surrounded without our board, so. Community from. Forty-five with crackers, just to serve the downtown. So we were trying to set the pulse to downtown, but being just on the.
Okay, so at this time I'd be looking for a motion to support their own or against the text amendment, uh PCB forty-five. Go ahead.
So number one, the amendment promotes the public health, safety, comfort, convenience. General repurposed complies with the policies and official plans of the village. I would say yes, the reason why this is the gonna be a modern public works facility if allowed for zoning as a special use. And it would provide access on a major road outside of the downtown, which we wouldn't be. Uh how you call impacting smaller properties in a negative manner. Would we, we would be removing a use from our downtown area to an area that could can can provide better service. Geographically speaking, size wise. Number two, the trend of development in the area of the subject property is consistent with with the requested amendment. I would say yes, the reason why, by placing a public works facility here down the road, if there's future annexations on this. On this roadway, it's gonna be part of the municipality and will have direct access to other possible future subdivision. So even though today it's at furthest point of order to this village. It might have more property that belongs to the village down the road, so this would be an ideal situation, looking forward to the future. Number three, the zoning classification permits uses which are more suitable than uses permitted under the existing zoning classification. I'm not changing the zone, I'm not proposing to change the zone. It's residential, there's other residential properties or zoning district around it. We're just proposing a use that will work on behalf of the municipality. But we're not changing this zone, so we're not making this commercial spot zoning property. Number four, the property cannot yield a reasonable reasonable use provided only under the conditions allowed under the zoning. Existing zoning classification. Public works will have water expanded to this property, so they're not taking water underground, not taking well, well water. There's also gonna be sewer service, sewer leaving the property with the pipe system. So even though this is a large property, I know this is a large public facility. It's not gonna be impacting negatively surrounding homes with water taken out of the system. Water being contributed back into the system, because this is not new single family homes. Number five, the amendment granted will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Not substantially detriment to the adjacent property. Yes, it is a different use, but the municipality has designed a site plan. Tries to move this public works facility as far away from any existing homes. They're also allowing for the natural vegetation on site to remain in place as a natural bumper. There, the public works facility will be located in an area near unincorporated Antioch. So there is only farmland next door to it, so there's no negative impact at this moment. You know, this is out of the ordinary and it's gonna have a very large frontier setback, landscaping and plumbing. So most people probably don't see this building. And also because of the way this property is situated, the cul-de-sac, the community, the butters that are next to it. Won't see it because of the vegetation and this property is at a higher elevation, you just won't see it. So it's not gonna be a detriment to the essential character of the neighborhood. It's gonna serve a function, it's gonna provide a public work function, but you're not gonna have the negative externality. Large buildings, small lot, no landscaping, no butting. Just want everyone to take that into account as part of this findings.
Okay. There any other public comment that we'd like to hear? Please come on up and state your name. Address, yes, this this one.
My name is Candy Curth, I live at W two Netherlands in Antioch. I live across the street from the site area that's in question. And I'm also the president of the HOA for the Arbers of Windmill Creek. Um I do wanna thank Howard for meeting with me this week. And we did go over the site plans for the public works department. And um I wanna say he was quite informative as to what he explained to me. And to another board member that was there. I also wanna thank Dennis, um he's been very instrumental in many things we've had happen in our community. From flooding of our streets to uh. Floodings of backyards that we have coming off of the bedner property. And that is probably one of our biggest concerns. Uh we always wanna strive to keep our our homeowners safe. And we do have a couple of French drains coming through those those back lots on Netherlands. But we're really concerned because we have only one detention pond that is on our property on one of our 아빠s. And it's kind of concerning, even though Howard had told me that there would be no connection. From that site to our detention pond. And it would be strictly be used as a swell area and that's how the water would be coming off of that property. But it's kinda hard, it's kinda disheartening to know that right now we have many Niagara Falls coming off of that property. When we have a good rain. And I had asked Howard, I said, did somebody investigate our detention pond? To see if our detention pond was adequate enough to provide safety for our homeowners there. And he tried to assure me that yes, it is. Then I asked him also, I said, right now I know that our water pressure in our subdivision. Which was verified this season is at thirty percent. A normal home is supposed to have forty to sixty percent PSI. What is that water pressure? What's gonna happen to our water pressure, even though you're, you're trying to convince us that you're not gonna tap into any of our, our water? What is that going to do that our homeowners has far as their water pressure?
Thank you, yes, please.
Um would you like me to answer the uh Overland uh Stormwater question first?
Yes.
Um and I think further into this meeting, Howard has a site plan and there's some grading on there. Um we uh our civil engineer, of course, follows the same as your subdivision. Um when a piece of property is developed and there's what they call an impervious surface, so it's roadways, it's rooftops. Um there's a design that calculates how large a stormwater basin would be, which happened with Windmill Creek, the Arbers. Um the same situation for this building. Uh we follow the Lake County Watershed Development ordinance and uh so does the civil engineer that designed the site. Uh we're certified community through them and uh so the detention basin is designed. Uh to meet the standards of capturing the water that uh we have created in previous site, uh the site. Uh collected and then release it at a point that follows the natural lay of the land. We have to follow which way the water is currently um going to a certain extent. I'm well aware of the uh past history that has been created with those homes, especially right where that. That water uh races down the hill. So I asked the civiles to take that into consideration, how we can divert that. To reduce the impacts on any of those homes. Uh so the restrictor is set in the berm, the water will be released to the south and then it'll hit a level spreader. So what that level spreader does is instead of it coming out of the pipe in a straight flow, it'll actually spread the water out. And then we've created a swale that will capture the water and bring it over to the east, getting it. Further to the east where there's more property, which is village property uh adjacent to some of those homes in the cul-de-sac. And give that over to uh that open area. Allowing some water to still follow that path down. Um where there's drainage swale in between the two homes and then eventually goes underneath the roadway there. But um Howard has the picture right here. I can point out a few areas, so this, this is the detention basin. Um here, the release will come through here, you can see this Overland swale. The level spreader will be up here and it'll re- release and we're directing it over to this open area where. It used to come or it currently comes right through here. So you could see there's, I think there's almost a twenty uh or thirty foot elevation difference from this piece of property here. And these homes. Um and this is roughly a five acre parcel. So when you get an inch or two of rain and it's being directed to here, you're, you're gonna have flooding, you're gonna have like a river flowing down there. So if we can capture all this water. Collect it into this basin and then divert it over to this area, which eventually goes down to the same wetland area that your subdivision contributes to, which we have to follow. We cannot, we cannot deprive a wetland of its, its natural drainage. Um that's part of the ordinance also.
And also the topography has been a change.
Yes, yeah, this, you could see. Most of, most of this is, is all flat, we're gonna flatten this out and basically create the building on the existing elevation of the property. So we're not raising it, we're not lowering it. Down here is pretty much the property line, so you can see there's a substantial separation from. The property lines that these homes might see. And then this is just asphalt, the building is actually way up here. Um but all of this area is proposed to be curb and gutter, which is gonna capture the water, none of this water is going to flow this way.
But we're almost all clay, how can you say that? It, clay does not absorb water.
I'm not talking about.
But I'm just saying, you're saying that it's going to flow. How does it flow if you're running it off of clay, clay substance?
Well, this is, this site will all be restored, it, we can't leave it clay, it's gonna have vegetation throughout.
Basically an improved site for um adjacent properties like, like yourselves. Um this has had. A large hill that drops rather quickly with about twenty-five feet. Uh that comes down to lots. I'm gonna, I'm gonna call for what it is nineteen and twenty, essentially twenty-one, twenty-two, you're gonna get hit. From right now what you have naturally coming down into those last heavily. They're creating a position where the water is being diverted over to the east. Still adding the water to the wa- the uh wetlands area, which is required by SMC rules. We couldn't go anywhere else with it. If we went to the same position you have right now, you'd be looking at the same result, basically. Um so they're, they're moving it more to the east and improving your opportunity for any water to come to your location. That's, that's how they've altered the design legally to alleviate some of the water coming into your subdivision from that raised property. Otherwise, you'd be sitting with the same scenario, the same situation as you have presently. And they wouldn't be able to clear that up any other way. And if we took this property, sold it, developed it or otherwise. The results might not be as advantageous for you as what you're getting now, am I correct, Dennis?
You are correct, and I would like to add that maybe we, we're the village of Antioch and we're the public works department. So it's, we're not like a private developer that's gonna come develop property. And if the situation is not changed or it's worth or, you know, there needs to be tweaks. I'm gonna do that, you know, it's not, it's not like, oh, we're here, sorry, we're gonna look to be, you know, good neighbors, I'm not. We have the equipment, we can make our own adjustments. If there seems to be water not going where we intended to, then we, I welcome you to bring that to my attention. And we'll work with you, I've worked with you in some.
I know, I know.
I'm not out, I'm not out to, you know, develop this property and then say you can't fuck.
No.
I'm the village of the Antioch, you know, so.
Been very forthright with our subdivision and the ethic, yeah. It's just that those, those houses on that firm area are very precarious as far as that water.
We, we actually installed a piece of pipe that collects the water and tries to funnel it. Um and and over the years assisted, uh Mr. Haley was there, he would call me up and we would clear the debris away. Because if, if the grass and so forth blocked it, he was looking at an eight inch pipe, then it would overtop that and his house was right there. Uh directly to the east of that large swale. So I, I'm fully aware of, of what the homeowners, especially right there, uh deal with uh in heavy rainfall events. So as you can see, I, I took that into consideration right, right away and had the civiles. Try to adjust the drawing so that we can reduce that on the individual homes that are right at that point.
You have the same issue in the cul-de-sac, you know that. It she flows off of, where you're talking at seventy-six Netherlands, it, or seventy-six North Avenue, your other parcel. It she flows off of that into the, the backyards of those six homes in the cul-de-sac also.
And they'll all be changed because of the, basically the site itself being all curved and put into the detention. and put into the detention place. So you, we're taking that six acres and capturing it and taking it all to the west, the detention place. All that water will not sheet flow down. You'll basically be capturing from the south curve line to the property. So tha- that area is greatly reduced and then it's concentrated to the, the basin where it'll be released at a slower rate.
All right, let me uh just try to get back, back, back on basis here. We're, we're talking about the text amendment, that entire site plan. So um if anybody has anything else to say about the text amendment at this time, please raise your hand and we can hear what you have to say for that. All right. Yes, Miss Badigan.
Howard, on your um axon finding, so number five. I don't know that I would, I'm trying to find that page again to get, get your specific word, but um.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't provide it. I, I just read it here.
Oh, I saw it in here. Yeah. Page twenty-eight.
Right, that's for the special use. It's not for this. That's I didn't see.
I think it was the same comment though that you had. So it's the same, says the amendment, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood and will not be a substantially detrimental to adjacent prop- property of state. So um, I don't, I, again, I think the building looks beautiful, right? That's, that's being proposed. Um, the only thing that I would like just to mention is that when it does come to an appraisal of a property such as a home, one of the items that is considered in that valuation is what you back up to and what you're surrounded by. So it could possibly, potentially have a negative effect when it came to the valuation of values of those owners.
Howard. I'm, I'm gonna restate what um Mr. Heimer just mentioned. Someone else could develop this and create a terrible site, maybe property values will go, go their sell. I look at it, this is an investment that municipality is making in this area of the village. They're trying to create a modern system. They're trying to provide better service with the growing community because we wanna continue to grow. This is part of that worth, part of it, just like we're in the process of moving to a new village hall, which I mentioned in my staff report, for the special use. The municipality is investing a lot of money into these two projects. Now, because of that, they can't do all the landscaping like I mentioned, either can they do, you know, a nice penetration to the building. They're, they're creating um type of uh concrete panel boards versus natural stones, brick, stuff like that. Currently, it's an empty site with a silo, concrete silo that's sitting there. It's not a pretty site, it's not. There's no positive value at this point to that property. Also, if a developer comes there, you're gonna have to do something with the water and with the sewer. Either they tap into the system or they're gonna ask for a relief or they're gonna ask for like a TIB district or something like that, which is gonna impact everybody else.
No, and I understand all that. I just wanna make sure like that, you know, again, it, it could affect somebody's property values. So what we believe, you know, won't be a substantial detriment to the, to the adjacent properties.
It's gonna be out of sight, so.
And I, I understand that, I'm just saying, yeah.
Miss Badigan, oh, and I don't know if we've spoken about this. I know it's in our report, Howard, but some of the did you maybe wanna mention what some of the other permitted uses are for the estate sites, like the skeet shooting club, skeet shooting game farm, um? I don't know what else, but.
So uh, a permitted use under the estate zone would be equestrian, stable, might be stolen horses. Farm stand, you might get uh, how do you call it, the runoff of farm. Call of course range. On as the sides maintain their green breasts. Greenhouse saw farm, might get a little stinky. A cattle, animals. Polo club. Religious assembly, that would be a special use. Would have a large building, lots of parking. Would they handle the strong drainage, like municipality? That's hard to say. Uh, single family homes like I mentioned. The skeet shooting game farm, winery, bed and breakfast. And then the others are all special uses, recreational facility, private school, kindergarten through high school, special use, preschool, childcare facility, solar farm, special use. There's different uses, so.
Thank you. I just wanted, you know, clarify for anybody who didn't know what the estate site could be used for as a limited use, so.
All right, is anybody else who'd like to make any comments to the text amendment for this proposal? Looking for motion to accept or deny EZB two-five uh two-five oh five. Consideration for text amendment of village zoning ordinance title ten, modification section ten dash five dash one dash D one to allow the civic use for, has a special use within the estate district zoning table of land uses.
I will make a motion, Sir McCarthy. Um, I'm PDB twenty-five dash four-five, consideration of the text amendment to the village's zoning ordinance title ten, modifying section ten dash five dash one, you want to allow civic uses as special use within the estate district zoning table of land uses. Given the five findings, findings of fact.
Is there a second? So move. Vote count.
And vote count, yes, Parkinson, yes. Mish, yes, Madigan, yes, sorry, Chumsky, yes.
Yes, yes. Okay. Moving forward, EZB two-five oh six, consideration of special use to allow civic use within the estate district for creation of a new public works uh facility, a site plan review with two waivers that deal with design standards and landscaping will also be reviewed. Subject properties located at twenty North Avenue, uh formerly two-two-eight-two-one West North Avenue, Antioch and L.A. six-two-two, with the pin number of vote two oh nine one zero 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 two. Howard, you're up.
Yes. So now this is the portion of the uh special use. So I provided four reasons why this application should be approved as a special use. Civic uses for a new public works facility within the estate zoning. So the first one is that the property in question is a vacant piece of land. So the village is not demolishing existing facilities, building, what have you. It's pretty much vacant. Second, the vacant property is situated in a quadrant of the village that is somewhat isolated and not so well developed. As I mentioned before, especially with the zoning map that was presented uh earlier this evening. Everything to the east of the property is unincorporated farmland. Farmland north of it, the only place where you have residential is to the south and to the west of the property. Third, the municipality continues to grow in a physical size and density. It's gonna eventually need a new public work facility that is modern, well-equipped, large enough to grow in size and well-positioned geographically speaking to provide for quality service to the current and future Antioch residents, business owners. Again, the situation, the location. Number four, the village is investing a good amount of money in the refurbishment of the new village whole building and nine-three-five Skateboard Drive with its own parking lot. The eventual construction of a new public works facility in North twenty North, twenty North Avenue with its associated parking and outdoor storage. The village, by investing in the physical expansion of new public buildings, municipality is making an effort to grow in relation to the new areas that the village will annex possibly in the foreseeable future in a well-planned, controlled and predictable manner. This is a new piece of property. There's reason to build a modern building, a rectangular building compared to the Boilin property where it's a regular, it might have to be developed in a different manner. This is a rectangular building that's being proposed as all the special use. Ample uh vehicular circulation around it. It's being pushed as far away from existing residential uh development. So in my closing for this portion of the special use, my staff report, as the village grows in physical size, the vil- the municipality will need to have the public works facility, facilities that can handle the demands of public work-related matter in a more concentrated and proficient manner. Building a brand-new facility, housing all of the public works trucks in one place in a safe, secure manner is the ideal situation for the village. This makes the property an ideal site for public development and investment. As I mentioned, the current property is seven ninety-six Haley Street. Half of the vehicles are being parked outside. These are expensive vehicles. They're under the natural conditions of the elements. With this new facility, the idea is to house all of those vehicles within the building. So this is my component of the staff report in relationship to the special use. If you want me to, I could go into details about the maps or stuff like that, but the good portion is gonna be discussed in the next, in the site plan review where we're gonna get into details. So if you would allow for me, I'd like to jump to the, the findings of fact.
Where are those in your documentation that you provided for us?
The findings of fact.
Yes, for this portion.
Right, it's, it's right behind page fifteen. Page sixteen, where you have your maps, that's a se- separate standalone document. So I created this with the uh planning and zoning, uh, you know, with the proposed vote count. And I mentioned all of the I mentioned the findings of fact for the four standards. Actually, two standards. The variance has four. So if you allow me to, I could go into greater detail with the findings of fact for the special use only.
Remember the findings of fact.
So the first one is the special use will not be injur- injurious to the use and enjoyment of the other property in the immediate area for the purpose already permitted. Not to substantially diminish property values with the neighborhood. So what I um answered is the subject pride, subject site is a vacant piece of land. By being vacant, the village can build a modern public facility that will house all of the work trucks, equipment, material storage, bins, improbable above-ground fuel tank area, a salt dome structure while providing for natural buffering. And the building in the facility will be located as far away as possible from any existing single-family homes. The new public works facility is located in an area of the village and within unincorporated Antioch that's surrounded by farmland and vegetated open space from the north, the eastern side of the municipal property, while the western and southern sides contain single-family homes which belongs to Windmill Creek community. This explains why the public development project is located in an ideal situation. It is far away from everything, especially from the existing single-family homes. The village is constructing a new municipal building with an assorted, associated parking and outdoor storage that will be enclosed by a perimeter chain link fence with slabs. This will allow for privacy and security from neighboring properties. Finally, the municipality is building the public works facility as far east as possible within the property lines. The village will preserve the natural vegetated area and creates, which creates a natural buffer to the west and southern part of Windmill Creek community's single-family homes. So that's the first standard. It's vacant, it's modern, it's gonna have a fence, it's located as far away as possible from existing homes today. The second standard, the establishment of the special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of adjacent properties for uses permitted within the zoning subject district. The subject will provide a much-needed public service to the inhabitants of Antioch with the construction of a modern, centralized public work facility that will be safe and secure from random act of vandalism and theft, while also providing for a place where the facility can grow on capaci- in capacity, internally speaking, for the storage of additional work trucks or more material bins and possibly a bigger salt dome structure that's proposed. These are all probable what has the possibility of happening with this property. The village is old, is also building this property in a pragmatic and conservative manner while also respecting the current residents that live nearby. The public works facility will contain a fence that will encircle the entire property to provide for security and privacy to itself and the surrounding properties. Finally, the subject property will not impede in the normal and orderly development and improvement of adjacent properties because of its geographic location. Reduction in the buildable footprint area and the prevent preservation of existing and surrounding vegetations. At most, a new public works facility will likely encourage more residential development to recur in the distant future. Such, this facility will provide for additional public work service in a shorter and closer location. Probable new annexations may take place in the future within this quadrant of the village. So again, empty property, vacant, it's gonna be secluded, but it's also gonna be possible to service possible annexations in the future. So as part of the comprehensive plan and zoning vote, this is, this is a positive news that the village is making this type of investment looking towards the future. So what I asked for this findings of fact is uh, the PDB, they recommend this that put the additional conditions for, under the site plan review, which is natural, compliance with the requirement with, of the village engineer and compliance with the Antioch fire district. Each, each of these conditions should be met, met within six months of approval. I mentioned the special use because typically we tie conditions to special uses, not to a site plan resolution. So that's the reason why I'm mentioning these conditions, even though I haven't gone to the site plan portion of them. Now, if you allow for me, I could go into the site plan portion because it's part of this application, but keep in mind you're voting for special use.
And then could we keep them separate because you've already done some on, on the agenda? Um, is there anybody who'd like to speak to the special use of this for civic use uh within the estate district from the public at this time? Okay, any comments we have coming forward, Ms. Sanford?
So, this is in regards to PDB twenty-five dash zero six.
Yes.
Um, so the site plan review is two waivers?
Yes.
And the two waivers are?
So I could go into details, I, I could go into the site plan review portion, then at the end you could vote for the special use. Typically, what I've seen and what I've read from my predecessor, typically there's a special use in a site plan that's voted all at the same time. The village later on legally creates abordments of resolution for each component.
You separated all three. Um.
Well, I separated.
Why don't, why don't we, why don't we, why don't we go, why don't we go into the, the site plan review at this time? Then we can, we can approve uh PDB two-five or deny, EZB two-five oh six, you can do it two-five oh seven at the same time in a motion. So go ahead into site.
All right, site plan components.
Can you clarify, if we're gonna do that, then maybe there's public comment on the site plan review if you're gonna do.
Probably no. Probably no, no comment will be requested at that time.
Okay.
Hundred percent. You, you don't have, you don't have that. He's kind of, he's kind of connecting these two portions, they almost work off of each other, I get it, but.
Just wanna make sure.
We used to do it all in one. He, he separated it a bit for.
Yeah, I, I get that, but he, you, you called for public comment, there wasn't any, but now we're gonna combine it.
And we, and we will call for public comment again, absolutely. We will never deny you with that.
All right, you called for public comment for the special use aspect, not for the site.
All right, carry on with the site.
All right, so the site plan review portion, and this is gonna be the meat of the, meat of the application right here. Again, it's a new public work facility that's located at twenty North Avenue. The pri- the property was last owned privately speaking. Was last owned by Julie, Julia Bittner, and this property belonged to the Bittner family for a very long time. The only thing that remains of the former farmstead property is a concrete silo which will be demolished once the public work building is constructed. Naturally speaking, the vacant property is located at a higher elevation compared to the surrounding properties. The suffraged property slopes downward in a gentle manner for a good majority of the existing of the property. Except for the southwest corner where it slopes steeply in a drastic manner near the existing single-family homes. That belong to Windmill Creek community. This is a natural occurrence, the village will try not to disturb. This area as best as possible. That's the existing conditions. In its plan to regrade the topography, the municipality will preserve the natural vegetation that runs along the western southwestern portion of the property. This will be done to allow for a natural buffer to continue to exist. Which allows the single-family homes that meander along Netherlands Drive. And to provide additional privacy for the existing residents that inhabit this area of the municipality. The village will situate the new public works facility towards the northeast east set corner of the property. Will build a new vegetative detention pond to the west of the building. It will be adjacent to the natural vegetation that runs along the western property line. This will be done to provide extra buffering to the residents that live west of the property. In general, now I'm talking about stormwater. In general, the volume of the water that's required to detain from this property. This paved area of the property, there's around two point three five acres foot of stormwater. But the village is constructing a system that can handle two point seven three acres foot of stormwater. This means all the water that is collected on the paved surface of the property, which includes the public works building. Its associated parking, its outdoor storage bins, its salt dome structure. Will predominantly be handled by this new vegetated detention pond. If the stormwater system overflows the main detention pond, it will be directed to the flow to a native level spreader area. As a secondary means of allowing for water to disperse. The municipality will discontinue, now I'm talking about public access to the property. The municipality will discontinue the existing curb cut that currently provides access to the property. It will build a new access way that is thirty-one foot deep in width, will be perpendicular to Nelson Road. It is being done for two reasons. The first reason is to align the new entrance way with Nelson Road. The second reason is to provide for a central access point to the public works building. When it comes to the bulk requirements pertaining to the state zone, the public work facility complies with all of the setback requirements. Minimum lot size, lot width, FAR building height. Right at the table in the staff report, which is found on page three of the special use site plan review. Basically, the public works facility will be situated quite nicely when it comes to setback requirements. The village made a conscientious effort to locate the property, the proposed building, as far away as possible from distance. On the Windmill Creek community. This was done not to impede on their private, privacy. And to reduce the magnitude when it comes to noise glare in the backyard area. Especially the single-family houses that are located along Netherlands Drive. However, the public work facility fails when it comes to the providing for maximum impervious area coverage. The state zone requires a maximum impervious coverage area of ten percent, and the public works facility is proposing thirty percent. This is an increase of twenty percent in this category. For example, thirty percent of eleven point six six acres, subject area. Is equivalent to three point five acre for one hundred fifty-three, three hundred seventy-two square feet of maximum impervious coverage. The variance will be required for exceeding the impervious coverage and it will be heard in a separate application. Applied as part of the variance process. The new public works facility will be forty-two thousand seven hundred ninety-five square feet in building area. And the proposed building is rectangular in configuration, which will be perpendicular to North Avenue. The building itself will contain two vehicular main entrances on either side of the building. Facing east and west from the property's sidelines. And each vehicular entranceway will be thirty-one feet in width. This will allow for work trucks to pull in and out quite easily around the building. The rear portion of the building will also have four garage doors that will open up directly behind the building. The building will have two pedestrian entrances. One will be a glorious entrance way. To enter the building, and then the other one will be a simple in style. Intended only for public works employees to use in a daily manner. I'm gonna go more about, I'm gonna speak more about the entrance way of the architectural element of the building, but I just wanted to mention this as part of it. Both pedestrian en- entrances are located in front of the main building. Front line. The public works facility will came, will contain a grand total of thirty-four outdoor parking spaces. Which will be located in front of the building, which will include the two handicap accessible parking spaces. Each parking space will be ten feet by twenty feet in length. With the two handicap spaces at ten point five feet in width in one, and ten feet in width in the other by twenty feet in length. With a striped area of eight feet in between, width by twenty feet in length. A five-foot sidewalk will be proposed to run along the building's front line frontage area. Which will allow for anyone to leave their vehicle and walk over to one of the two front pedestrian entrance space. Another sidewalk will meander towards the northwest area of the building, which will allow for access to a concrete patio, which is twenty-four. Feet in width by thirty feet in length, and a third pedestrian entrance along the western wall of the building. The proposed concrete patio will contain three picnic tables. Which will allow the public work employees to eat their lunches outside if the weather is nice and humid. The site plan shows a rear area dedicated for five material storage bins and a single back room. The storage area will compromise an area of two thousand four hundred seventy-three square feet in size. The rear salt dome structure will incorporate a circular area of two thousand eight hundred twenty-seven square feet. And a proposed fuel island containing area of one thousand two hundred twenty-two square feet. Which includes an above-ground fuel tank and parking for the vehicles to fill up with gasoline. May, this may be erected in the foreseeable future, but this is not being done at this moment. However, this proposed above-ground fuel tank will be located in the rear center area of the property. Between the material storage bins and the back room bin and the salt dome structure. The proposed public works facility will be enclosed by a six-foot tall chain-link fence with vinyl slash, slats. Which will encompass the perimeter of the building area from the building frontline towards the back of the paved area. Where the material storage bins, back room bins, salt dome structures are located. In other words, a berber fence will encompass almost the entirety of the facility's paved area, except for the front yard. This will be done to provide for privacy and security for a public works facility. Again, the variance will be required for a chain-link fence in the residential zone. A separate application is being applied for this as a variance. Now comes the part of the application that I speak about architectural elements. So when it comes to architectural features, the new public work facility is relatively simple in shape and style. It's a rectangular step building that has forty-two thousand seven hundred ninety-five square feet in size. And is only twenty-nine point five feet in height. The proposed building is a single-story building that will have an automatic fire sprinkler system. And is mostly a class C building. Public work facility will, will house about eighteen employees working at the building at any given moment. The hours of operation will be between seven AM to three thirty PM. The facility will house about thirty work vehicles within its building structure. Currently, half of the vehicles are being stored outside of the existing public works facility, which is located at seven ninety-six Tingley Street. So this new building will be an improvement in storing all of the vehicles inside in a safe, secure condition. The proposed building is, is broken up into three building use classification sections. The first section is classified as group B business. The second section is labeled as group S dash one moderate hazard storage. And the third section is labeled as group S dash two low hazard storage. The group B section will include six offices, administrative assistant reading area. A conference room, a workroom, two bathrooms, a bunk room, a lunch and training room. And a large locker room area with four showers and bathrooms. The group S one section will contain a part storage room, light maintenance workshop that has. That has a fleet manager room and a toilet. A heavy maintenance area, a welding bay and a wash bay. The group two S dash two section includes a large area dedicated for indoor parking. Which is labeled as heated vehicular storage on the plan set. This includes a large area indicated for indoor parking, which is labeled as heated parking, right? It will contain twenty-three regular parking spaces inside of the building with another eleven parking spaces for larger vehicles. This section has two staircases and an elevator. More, the, the majority of the building will, will house a multitude of work vehicles and equipment. That are used on a constant basis such as pickup trucks, tractor mowers. Equipment trailers, loaders, backhoes, mini excavators, skid loader, bucket truck. Bush clipper, water trucks, snow bowers, mowers, dump trucks. The basic ideas for this building is to house all the work vehicles and equipment and service trailers inside of one building. In total, the public work facility will contain sixty-eight parking spaces. Thirty-four parking spaces will be indoor, while another thirty-four parking spaces will be outdoor. Naturally, the indoor parking spaces will use, will be used to shelter the vehicles while the outdoor parking spaces will provide for employee and visitor parking. Per the zoning, the public work meets the parking requirement and a traffic study was not created for this development. Per the photometrics lighting plan, the public works facility will contain four light poles within the front yard parking lot area. Nineteen building mounted lights will be installed along the perimeter of the building. A single wall-mounted light will be attached to the salt dome structure. Rear light pole will eliminate the proposed and probable above-ground fuel tank area. In total, twenty-five lighting devices will be used to eliminate the exterior area of the public works facility. Again, the majority of the lighting devices will be wall-mounted and will encircle the building area. Finally, the light storage, the light spillage on neighboring properties will be insignificant. In magnitude or illumination due to the notion that most of the light spillage will be concentrated. In the fenced-in area of the larger property. The proposed building has large setbacks when it comes to front yard, two side yards and a rear yard. So no lights will spill onto the dedicated setback areas. This is the component where I speak about the two waivers as part of the site plan review process. Due to the nature of the project, municipalities seeking relief on two aspects of the site plan criteria. Which includes design standards and the landscaping. Unfortunately, the village has a limited budget and spending extra money on building penetration and landscaping would not be too prudent at this moment. Keep in mind, the municipality is also renovating and moving to a brand-new village hall in the very near future. An additional expenditure has been spent on this project as well. So public works facility is being built in a prouled but dignified and respectable manner. The single-story rectangular building is being built in a precast concrete panel manner. The building will include three varieties of precast, of precast panel system. The first part will include, the base of the building will contain a stone pattern. Form liner finish with a cast stone window still. The second part will have a linear pattern form with linear liner finish. Which will encompass, encompass the first floor windows and perimeter of the window areas and doors and garage opening. The third part will include the standard smooth precast finish that includes the overall length and height of the entire building. This standard of smooth precast finish will be used for a good portion of the building. The new public works facility will, will include a grayish color pa- color pa- palette. Will contain, or will have contrasting black frame vestibule, window, door, garage openings. This will allow for a good balance when it comes to color. The building will also contain perimeter landscaping, which will provide for greenery around the building. The step building will contain a main elaborate vestibule entrance way, which will be situated off-center to the eastern side of the building. This angular vestibule will be the official entrance to the building, but employees can use another entry point to the opposite side of the vestibule. Which will allow for quick access to the building. In general, most public work buildings are quite ordinary in architectural design and building material. By incorporating a mixed design precast paneling system, providing an off-centered vestibule entrance way. And establishing guerrilla landscaping around the building footprint, the village is trying to do more in an economical way. However, the plan asks for architectural, the plan asks for more architectural. Articulation, penetration for a civic building, which in this example cannot be met. The requirements for the site plan review includes changes in color, graphic pa- pattern, patterning. Changes in texture, changes in materials, arches, purlus, towers, gable, projections, hip roof elements. Horizontal, vertical bricks, at least one-foot decorative storefront or articulated window pattern. And other similar techniques. Also, the village requires as part of the site plan review criteria. The building, for a building to be constructed in a predominance of quality materials that may include brick, glass, native stone and. Culture of stone. Hence the reason why the municipality is seeking a waiver on design standards to the notion that this is a public work facility. Is located outside of the downtown area, which is more conservative in architectural style. And the waiver includes section ten dash thirteen dash eight design standards. And section de- ten dash thirteen dash eight dash one, commercial office and civic building. When it comes to landscaping, the village is trying its very best to provide for robust landscaping, but this cannot be done. Landscaping is a very costly venture. The municipality is providing for a combined sixty-seven foot locker area, which includes the right-of-way area, the green space, and the front yard area. This will include trees, shrubs, flower, grass, vermin, which will be included within the front yard area. Which will extend into the, right-of-way to the street curb. Also, the village intends to add a five-foot perimeter landscaping along the front and sides of the building. However, this landscaping is not as robust as required. Even though the landscaping plan was submitted to the municipality and illustrates the landscaping will be provided by the municipality to the fullest extent possible. The reality is the vill- the village will fall short in this commitment. As described earlier, money is a large factor in this situation. The village is still committed to adhere to landscaping that was created for this project. But will plant additional landscaping in a piece, piecemeal manner, instead of doing a whole at once as part of the site plan review section. Public works use the public landscaping as a roadmap to eventually find more landscaping in the future. And as promised, the municipality will saw the ground that will be disturbed during the building process. Existing vegetation will be preserved as best as possible. This will allow for the public works facility to comply with the landscaping requirement in a limited manner. However, the village is seeking a waiver from section de- ten dash thirteen dash nine landscaping and the zoning code. In conclusion, the village is proposing to build a brand-new public work facility at twenty North Avenue. This is a development that works on many fronts. It consolidates all the work vehicles and equipments to be parked under one roof. It will be located in a quadrant of the municipality that is remote and not densely populated. Will provide for a large property which public works can grow as their needs change over time. My recommendation, staff believes that the special use for the public work facility will be fine. It will not generate any substantial negative impact or traffic to the surrounding community. It will not generate any substantial negative impact or traffic to the surrounding community. Especially used pepperproof woods service the immediate community with beneficial matters since the public works facility will be postponed to fulfill its public service in a rap- rapid and expedient manner. Based on the foregoing analysis, foregoing analysis, staff recommends the following motion. Motion, the planning is ongoing for to recommend the two of those special use for the public works facility, which is located by North Avenue, and will contain the stipulations as mentioned as part of the findings of fact under the special use, compliance with the requirements of the village engineer and compliance with the requirements of the anti fire di- protection district. That is my report on the special use site plan plus the two waivers.
Okay. The sand football.
Um. So the two waivers have to do with the design standards and and the landscaping, correct?
That is correct. So zoning code has a separate section, it's called site plan review criteria, which deals with commercial, residential and um civic uses. The village requires that whoever develops the property to to build it in a a nice manner. Aesthetically pleasing, architecturally pleasing, and robust and honest.
So can we talk about what would be required typically with the site for landscaping and and how this is going to fall short of that? I mean, I'm I have a concern about that because we are so close to the residential. And and how were both pages assigned and are?
It is. This is part of the architectural documents. I included landscaping as part of page sixteen in my staff report for special use. So this is what it would look like at its most robust man.
I'm still looking, sorry.
Word.
Yeah.
I think that was mainly pertaining to the amount of vegetation and what we're providing versus what we're not. Man, the sand flipper was about.
I'm sorry, what?
Amount of vegetation. We should provide versus what's required versus what we're providing.
That's right.
That's not appropriate.
That's right.
Not enough of.
What what would be required and what what we're the village is.
Proposing at this time.
That's right.
How are we falling short?
Correct.
So I'm gonna just read the uh requirements. Then I think it's easier just to tackle it under this. So under commercial office, commercial office industrial institutional landscaping, what's required is a twenty-five foot landscape buffer adjacent to material collector's street shall be maintained along with the planting of one shade tree or ornamental or ornamental tree and fifteen shrubs for every thirty linear feet of frontage. Shrub should be planted in a manner to create a minimum of four foot hedge along the portions of the landscape buffer. In addition, on you waiting burns shall be constructed within the landscape buffer, minimum of two feet high. Shade trees shall incorporate a minimum minimum caliper of two point five inches at time for each planting. Every effort should be made to for mature landscaping to not obstruct signage or future site plans. So the village is providing for a front yard buffer. As mentioned, remember I mentioned sixty-seven total between the front yard of thirty-five feet plus the right of way area. So nearly is complying with that first requirement. The second one is uh any landscape buffer adjacent to material or collector's street shall incorporate a five foot sidewalk with an internal connection to the development sidewalk system. There is not going to be a sidewalk because no one walks over to the public works facility, so that's one of those standards that will not be met. It's part of it's five foot sidewalk is in front of the building, which is going to serve parking.
Is there is there is there a sidewalk to the to your dish uh adjacent property to the west?
Yes.
And extends all the way over to there?
Yes. Yes.
Will there be a sidewalk?
Uh there is one now.
Yeah, there's an existing sidewalk that come from the west property line and basically stops at Nelson Cove. Um I'd have to look back. I know they had sidewalk proposed running the property with sidewalk. I'd have to look back and see the civil run.
And again, it's a budgetary, it's a budgetary issue.
I know what you're saying, the budgetary, but.
I'm just asking, I mean, I don't, what what is the requirement for the landscaping and how how is the village falling short so that we
That's the reason why I asked for a waiver. So I've I've gone line by line for all what's required. And when you start to realize what is required, it's just we just can't afford.
That that drawing, the the drawing in the plan set represents us following the code. Which would result to, I think, roughly two hundred fifty thousand dollars of of money.
So the drawing that we have in plan set right now in front of us.
Yes.
Follows the code.
Yes.
So we're asking not to do what is on this drawing.
Yes. Because of applying to.
There there's also a part of the code that would, we'd have to create that buffer on the residential area. So all the existing trees on the west property line, we would have to demo and put in new plan.
So can we can we talk about the buffer a little bit more between the residential and this proposed?
Can I uh just for a second now, I know I know that with the western and the southern property line, because of the water detention and the diversion that we're trying to do, it's gonna change that scenario quite a bit. So that it so that we're not gonna be able to provide as much of a buffer because the the water needs to divert more to the east away from those properties. Am I correct?
Well, well, per the code, that western property line, all the trees, even even west of the property detention, we would be required to remove it all and put in new.
Right.
So we're leaving there, we're not touching that. Where the the goals with, we will be removing some trees to to activate for the detention.
I don't know what's there presently. Do we have a tree count on any of our paperwork? It's a promise.
Yes, we we do. It's it's under the architectural plans and also.
And where where would that be what you choose so we can?
That's a good picture right there.
Yeah, there's one that shows the color and show the color of the trees. This is what's gonna be cut.
What pages then? What pages are?
I can't tell you the page. It's part of the uh architectural plans.
So the existing tree uh location and count presently is um page eighty-three, eighty-three and eighty-four of two thirty-one. Which shows the existing trees to the west of the property and their location. Doesn't tell me much more about what they are, the size of them, diameter, type.
It's all here. It's all along the side.
In the west, yeah.
Where are you at?
Sorry, sorry.
Okay, here we are. Page eighty-three, is it page eighty-three?
Eighty-three is the one I had.
Four.
Where it shows me the trees that are existing.
And the ones that are coming. Now.
It doesn't tell me which ones are being removed at that time on this page. Shows me the existing, but it doesn't give me caliber size other information.
Do you see something that shows where they're coming down?
Oh, it gives me caliber in size. Six inch, seven inch, twelve inch, eight inch, six inch caliber, fifteen inch. So you have a lot of mature trees on the entire west side. There's quite a few on the southern side, fifteen inch, twelve inch, ten inch. So if all those come out, then you'd have to replace them with all what? By code and and what would be required? Four inch caliber.
Is it is it like three, three trees per one that come down?
It depends on the size, species.
Sure.
Right. There's there's mature twenty-four inch, eighteen inch, thirty inch, fifteen inch on the west side, which helps, you know, buffer properties from this. I see those. Twenty-four, eighteen, fourteen, okay. Um what was that page that you have up there right now? Do we know that page? It was seventy something.
Seventy. Okay.
Ah seventy-seven. So the trees that are being removed, the one in the X's, trees that are being saved are all to the west of that? Most of those are gonna be removed no matter what because that's where the building is gonna be placed. Correct? Correct, Howard?
What happened?
I'm sorry, is?
Most of those trees that are gonna be removed are basically because of the placement of the building.
Yes.
And so what is what is the is what is the requirement to replace this? Do we know that?
Yeah, it's in the it's in the code.
Okay.
That's one of the variants, is correct, is to not have.
Well, it's not a variance to that. There's different standards for variants and wave. So it's a sightline waiver. So the sightline criteria was created to create, you know, an ideal situation. But we're starting to realize that this is a little bit too much for most people and most developers to develop. So this is a conversation I've had internally with the administration and with the uh our legal team, that this needs to be revised over time because if you're starting to remove existing trees and you have to replace so many new trees, it's gonna become cost prohibitive for most businesses doing business here. So the idea was, let's have a waiver system where maybe down the road, you pick two out of three requirements for landscaping that should be met and not all of them. So this is the first time we're we're using a waiver system for this application. The policy that has been instituted recently within the village, hence the reason why it's coming in as a waiver.
I understand. I just, I'm I'm having difficulty when, you know, when when we built, you know, our own, we were we were held to the village ordinance and we had to come in and we had to replace three trees for every tree that actual town and we get a lot of money that we all paying taxes. I I'm just not too comfortable, especially when we're talking about removing buffering and landscaping when we're backing up to a residential. So I don't know, um I'll.
What is what is what is what is the ordinance for removing trees? How many do we have to replace?
It depends on the tree size.
Okay. What is your state? Tree size is twenty-two inch, tree size is twenty-four inch, tree size is twelve inch, tree size is six inch, that would give you a range, twenty-four twelve, ten and six. Where's your state for those?
Yeah, I suppose. This code doesn't have, I have to go back to the office now.
All right, what what's the other uh waiver that we're looking for? So one is vegetation and and uh.
Building.
So the building, the building code waiver, what are you what are you looking for and specifically and how is that affecting this building?
Well, under design standards, I read it, I I read them in my staff report. So under commercial office and civic buildings, building form, the design of all buildings shall employ textured surface projections, recesses, shadow lines, collar, window patterns, overhangs, reveals, changed in parapet height, similar architectural devices to avoid monolithic shapes, surfaces to emphasize building entries. Design shall avoid law, unbroken flat walls forty feet or higher. Each building will be designed to so the facade of the building represents a clear base, middle and top. The base of ground shall be appropriately articulated to provide human scale. Buildings have a single wall exceeding forty feet in length shall incorporate four or more of the following. Changes in color, graphical patterns, which they're doing with the panel, our free panel system. Changes in materials, you can't do it, it's just not, it's cost prohibitive. Arcades or purgals, towers, gable projections, hip roof not being composed, not being done. Horizontal, vertical breaks at least one foot, decorative stone front, articulated window pattern and other similar techniques. So then it's broken up into material, entrance, design, collars, roof line, trash enclosure.
So we're doing something more similar to an industrial type building versus uh what we've been looking at. Downtown, retail, other locations, so on and so forth. Articulating roof surfaces, changes, uh more design aspects we're avoiding because it's uh obviously less effective to do a box than it is to do something more.
So, yeah.
Formed for historical look, so because of the location, it's not bad.
So what's preferred is, right, when it comes to materials, what's preferred is clay, fired, red brick, sandstone, other natural finishes.
All right.
They're discouraging ephors, fibers and mounds or smart bricks. They're looking for heavy heavier materials, cultured stones, basering materials, which I mentioned in my staff report. We're looking for different type of elements, painted metal, painted concrete. Different type of elements, painted metal, painted concrete. Plain unfinished concrete block with large expenses, not encouraged. Then you go into design about entrance design. Right, building shall incorporate prominent entrance, I said, there's a beautiful lesson here. That's being provided, it does not have overhangs or fabric openings, not have recesses or columnar. Does have a pr- building projection, it doesn't have arcades or still canopy. The building entrance shall be in contrast to the surrounding wall plan, this entrance is gonna pop out, it's gonna be glassed. The building entrances shall be framed around doorways, creating materials, primary assigned material. Shall be accessible to handicap user, which is gonna be, the building entrances shall be well let, decorative lighting shall be required. Incorporate raised landscaping bids to the building entrance, encouraged considering using terraces or porcupines. Offered, colors shall incorporate earth tone color. Right, or primary color shall be limited. Then, there is a section that deals with roof line. So what's preferred, projecting gables, hip, horizontal, vertical breaks, stormers, other similar techniques. The answer.
Well, so, I mean, the landscaping, I could answer. Um, the other concern, you know, is I have, and I don't know if this is separate from this particular. Agenda item, is the chain link fence.
That's where the various application.
Okay. Um, because normally that would be allowed, though that's my other concern. Um, we wouldn't allow that, you know, in a residential area, so. Um, and then, I guess this is a question more for you, is, is the other public works facility gonna. It's gonna remain where it's at, and this is in addition to it, and I should have maybe asked this earlier, but just.
Uh, a portion of it will remain, which is ways water treatment plant, but that, that will remain, there will be. Um, there's roughly two, three buildings that are on the south side of Creek. Uh, those were most likely demo, uh. There will remain an access there, so be able to access, you see the tree department, there's the purposes. Uh, there are a couple other buildings, uh, that were mainly looked at for sort of obstacles. The results of the bids, or is it proposed?
Sure. And then I know that it's proposed, I mean, not in plans right now for the fuel tank, which would be above ground, right, so. I don't know, could you talk a little bit, I mean. Howard, would they need to come back before us, when, but the fuel tank, I understand why they need it. Um, but what, what are the impacts of that, you know, uh, with heavy fuel and. Your trucks and everything, uh, and everybody, so.
As far as a zone, or?
Well, as far as how it, how it could, if it all impact, you know, surrounding residential.
Do we have a brown ground fuel tank present?
Uh, at the existing facility.
Okay, so we have nothing presently that we use off or for fuel.
The, the fuel tanks, um, are an alternative. Unless I get corrected from the board. Because there's potential for cost savings, it's a contract up to them. Um, maybe they would consider the alternatives, but right now, with some of the, the crisis that we're experiencing, I don't know that feeling. And look at alternatives, so. The fuel tanks would be, it would be mandated by the US Fire Marshal, they inspect them. The tanks are inspected on an annual basis. One of the options I have is I can go through a company, and with that contract, they're required to change the tanks out, inspect them. If they need to be coated or anything, it's all within the contract, so if, if they threaten off us.
Sure.
Uh, to abide by all the state regulations.
Okay.
I don't know.
I think, I think didn't be asking questions, but if this was going in by me, I would want answers too, so, doesn't really have to know.
First.
Alright, uh, facts of finding, we talked about. Potential future development and how we want more people in our community and all this, um. Was there ever further discussion on the property that's northeast, which would be kitty corner of this by Nelson? I know it was initially, there was discussion about a solar farm. What's the latest on that property?
Well, it's, it's not in the village, so it's in the county. And I don't know status of that property for its solar capability and or approval process through the county. I believe they did preliminary approval for it, and from there, nothing else has been done.
Um, I know, Howard, you mentioned no traffic study, I ride my bike and walk on sidewalks, uh, all the time. And I think if we are asking for. If, if we're saying in our facts of finding that we want to entice people to move here and have a community, people also like walkability. And we really need to consider a sidewalk, um.
Public works question. So, so how this came to me?
Yeah, I understand there's not enough money and I understand all this, but then it's like.
Let's backtrack a little bit.
Sure.
How long has this been going on, a year and a half?
Uh, the design and everything?
Yeah.
Uh, I think it started in one, two.
So, I'm coming towards the, the tail end of this project, with most of it done. If I was here thirty years ago, I would have asked for a traffic study, and I would have encouraged the municipality to do it, to the best interest of protecting everyone. And it wasn't done, this is what I've inherited.
Yeah.
I couldn't bring this application in April, May, because there were still changes being done to the property. So what I mentioned in my staff report, the traffic study was not done, it's just not done, because, well.
Quite honestly, with this, I mean, we have the population, that's the guy who would want trucks. It's not like we're, we're a Walmart or Ace Hardware, where we're introducing thousands of vehicles. The low, we're twenty employees.
The low impact from the use of, of the property typically wouldn't warrant that. Traffic study, for us to do things like accessibility.
I just think.
I doubt, I doubt, there's nothing to ignore that.
Lake County DOT, you know, where it work.
That's Lake County DOT.
Okay, that's all I have to know, because we're moving it, right, and it's gonna be a four-way.
I understand, I understand, but they're not gonna, under those particular circumstances, they're not gonna require with twenty vehicles. Or twenty, twenty personnel and vehicles that possibly ten of them we go out with. A right in, right out, or, or a light, or other things of that nature, that's not gonna typically be on, on the map at all. As far as accessibility, sidewalks, with people getting in and out too. Yes, people still go to public works, people still go and engage with public works, people still ask for things we've done at public works. So those things should still be allowed and available for the area and for our neighboring residents, so. Sidewalk should be something that should be there and part of the plan, I agree.
I, I have a question, so there isn't an existing sidewalk here, you can see that.
I haven't, yeah, yeah, there is one there, there's also one that connects to the subdivision to the west.
Is the plan remove that sidewalk that currently sits there?
So at the end of that sidewalk is where the entrance would.
Yeah.
We were just not looking to continue it to.
The east of.
Further east, right.
Um, in the future, yeah, if there was a development that went to the, the east of us, then it would be connected.
True.
So, so getting back to the landscape thing. It's right there. It's outside of the zoning ordinance, this is why it's not really.
Where, what, what is it show, I can't see it, so.
It is chapter eight dash six dash four, it deals with replacement of trees. Depends on the caliber, what's required. For one tree is three trees, for two trees is four trees, for three trees is six. This falls under. The ordinance, tree and vegetation, chapter six. This isn't site plan waiver, this is outside of our jurisdiction, does it exist? Yes. But I'm looking at an application for site plan requirements, which I was trying to read. The highlights is right here, I can read it to you very quickly.
Well, I just, I mean, we're at being asked to, you know, consider a special use and the site plan review with two waivers, which is varying from the landscaping requirement. And the design standards, so that.
Under, under site plan review, let me read the summary, because this will help.
Okay.
Answer some of your questions.
Sure.
Again, that's outside of zoning purview. So the first one is what's required, twenty-five foot landscape buffer along arterial streets, providing thirty-five. Ten foot landscape buffer alongside and rear perimeter size, when not abutting an arterial or major collective. It's gonna be green, but it's not gonna be landscaped. One shade tree or ornamental tree for every thirty linear feet of landscape buffer. Fifteen shrubs for every thirty linear feet of landscape buffer. One landscape island will be installed for every twelve parking spaces, not being proposed, with a minimum width of eight feet. All access points, all access points will maintain un- unobstructed sightlines. Any plantings of a tree has to be in a minimum, at least twenty feet away from access point. Ongulating berm shall be incorporated, the landscape buffers adjacent to arterial, so they are providing. The buffer, so when I'm talking about landscape, I'm talking about the site plan portion here. This is outside, this is regular code, it's not site plan. This is why, yes, am I aware of it? Yes, but that's not what I'm looking at. What's being presented as part of the application. So technically, this could be a resolution or ordinance going to the village board, so it doesn't fall to. Site plan or zoning, it's a different chapter.
Yes. Chris, do you have anything else?
Uh, just that I agree with Sam with the one, um.
Good. Ms. Meech.
Um, one of my questions regarding the landscaping waiver, if that is approved and. Your information says that eventually it will be, landscaping will be planted, is there a timeframe that that would happen? Or are we just saying, oh, we'll plant it, and it could take twenty years for them to put everything in?
That would be a whole, uh, budget true.
Alright.
And what the building would allow me per year.
Yeah, community is a possibility of phase in, the landscaping into the buffering and.
And we don't, so there's kind of two parts. When you go through the site plan review and what the requirements are, it's, it's. It's very excessive.
I understand.
Um, I don't, I don't want just open grass and, you know, clear view, I do, I was involved with. The park across street, um, so I, I would like to have some type of, um, I guess. You know, even of what you guys would prefer, and then what we can do, my other item is. I don't want my staff to maintain all this lush landscape when they should be out serving the community. So there's, I'm just looking for a hang on.
My, I mean, my concern is more with the trees and the buffering for the neighbors, so.
And, and we don't intend on touching any of that. That, that neighboring buffer that exists on the west property line, we don't plan on going into. So, um, and then, like I said, otherwise, it required us to knock that all out for, for this code. So we're kind of saying, okay, we're not gonna touch this, we'll leave this existing, we'll get a little flexibility on the installation of it.
Anything else, Ms. Chris?
So, Howard again, so at the very bottom, is the appeal process for landscaping, for removal of trees. We don't have a tree commission anymore, so we go to the village board.
Okay.
So it's outside of the site plan again, this is why I'm aware of it, but it's just not.
What happened to the tree commission? I'm sorry, I'm just asking, because it used to exist, maybe it might. I mean, but I know since I moved into Antioch twenty years ago, I talked to somebody about trees in my neighborhood, so.
We don't have it on the list.
You don't, I'm sorry, I, I mean, that's difficult.
No, no, and I was involved with it, uh, in the interior.
Talk to you, I don't know.
We may have, and it, it typically revolves around subdivisions. Um, landmarked heavily wooded, uh, subdivision, and they, they couldn't even.
Where I lived, so.
Typically, what the developer would do would cut down the trees and they'd be required to go replace them.
Or anybody else who built in there, we had to request, we had to replace them, you know, but we had to add trees and, you know. So I was just, I'm just trying to understand what we're really talking about.
So I'm gonna read into the record, it's eight dash six, A dash nine appeals. Any part who elects to dispute any action or decision by the Arborist or Tree Commission. Shall be entitled to appeal to the village board of trustees for final determination. So since we don't have an Arborist, we don't have a tree commission, we can appeal to the village board. Removing trees and not replacing the number of trees, the powertrain and sizing of the trees.
So noting that that's been written to the record. Ms. Meech, share anything else?
Um, just one more question, I assume there, or will there be cameras or any type of security facility?
Uh, yes, we will have to, so it'll be very limited, probably for farmers of the building. Uh, then, to, but we'd be certainly with, but. So the fence will have, currently right now, there's two gates per home. So, access into the cycle zones, each, uh, uh, gate opener, building will have. Car there, so.
Anything else?
Thank you, Ms. Van.
I have a couple questions, um, and then, so, um, just to, can you just clarify for us what the hours of operations were done? Harvins?
Sure, the over, hours of operation for public works is seven to three thirty. Currently, right now, we do operate from six to three thirty, uh, tree and plant approval comes in at six. Also, we're on summer hours, so right now we operate at six o'clock. So it varies, but worst case scenario would be six to three thirty.
Okay, and is that a Monday through Friday, or is it Saturday, what?
No, typical operations would be Mondays through Friday, we do have staff that comes in on Saturday and Sunday. Uh, basically, they come in, get in the truck, and then you visit all the, uh, the wellhouses. Usually an hour and a half, but they're, but they're all.
So there should be minimum activity after four o'clock during week and.
On a tip.
Very limited on the weekend.
On a typical day, correct?
Unless there was some, obviously, we're just here, so, okay. Um, and then my other question is, and I don't know if either one of you can answer this, but I'm just curious myself, so. Um, with the building of the new village hall, right, um, so the existing village hall, people are gonna be exiting that building. And, uh, my understanding from previous conversations, that is prime real estate in the area? And will it be sold? What will happen with the existing building, and could some of those funds from the sale of that building go to help? With public works, right, because I, I feel like. We're, we're screwing on your building, so what happens in five years when, because we use. Cheaper materials or whatever, that now we're replacing stuff that should have lasted longer, or. You know, the not waiting and doing a fuel tank till, who knows when, till it's in the budget. Which could have been savings for X amount of years, right, by, like you said, you get it cheaper if you hire a contractor. And then again, you're taking away the liability if you hire, uh, you know, based on your contract with. A supplier that they maintain it and have the risk there, so I, I, those aren't, that's, I guess, my question. And if you guys can't answer that, I totally understand, but I, I, we don't have a parks department, well, we don't have a park district. Okay, we have a parks department and they're in a house, are they moving to the new village hall as well? So that's now two potential vacant properties that.
Oh, they still intend to utilize the facility. Um, this building, yes, this will. Be for sale, uh, there was actually.
Be for sale, uh, there was actually a developer that presented that last form of a concept of ability. I don't, they had four meeting, some of the board members were not payable, so I can, either they're gonna go back to the drawing board. The, these pieces of prime location, I think there's gonna be. Um, heavy conversations from the mayor and board members as to what does happen to this property, say, something that. Probably not, uh, we have the abilities to call it, I think, well. And yes, I appreciate that, I, I bought a long time for this building, uh. And anybody that does not know, we currently reside and operate out of two double-wide trailers that were placed there in. The eighties, early eighties. So I, I've made do with what I can for as long as I can and worked for the road for twenty-six, twenty-seven years and. It's almost, I thought, about my whole career. So it's kind of a long process for me, I bought two, you can just get a precast build, that was a battle right from the start. I was not a good for a metal building, which is not in the lab. I'm working for longevity, don't wanna be in my building, you know, saving the public, including the infrastructure for the public. And, and what's best for the buildings, I've had a lot of costs within this, this, uh, building design. We actually did find down in and, uh, right now I'm working that budget by scrounging right now, I am doing today trying to cut. So I appreciate that. Not, not that some of these items I don't wanna do, it's my hands are really tied at that point, so.
I just can't, again. Feel like. Every item that is coming for us that has been, the village really can't make sense of. Exception and variance or, wait, whatever you want to call. Um, um, I should be setting the precedence for the community. And I hope to make sure that Genesis staff shortcut this building. Those are all the questions I have.
Thank you.
This is Zachary Chiswski, um, I agree with the comments about fencing, I, I'd like to see something a little more elevated, maybe in tuning. Final slides, um, that could be personal opinion. Uh, the fuel tanks, obviously, that's kind of in my wheelhouse, and a bit of some maybe for down the road, um, you know, above-ground tanks have new, uh. Sort of secondary containment systems where you can put the nozzle in that. Any drippings actually go back into a, into the tank itself or a holding container that can pump that into the thing. Um, but some sort of secondary containment prevents runoff would probably be beneficial. Um, again, in my limited knowledge of top- topographical features, runoff, things like that, I think that the plan. May actually help the subdivision to the west and southwest where they're gonna be redirecting, um. Water to the wetland, to the east and southeast, I think that may actually help the residents over there, uh, cause you, instead of having. This big dirt, uh, sort of on. Let, I don't wanna say on landscape, but you know, natural, you know, you guys will be doing something to redirect and it's probably better than what exists now, I would think that that would help. Um, I don't know whether they really have any question per se, because with just some thoughts that I jotted down while listening and reading. Um, I think a precast building is far superior to obviously where you're in, it could probably be sucked up, but God forbid we have a tornado. The, the double lights, um, certainly better than a big blue metal polearm, uh, which I think there's one over there too. Um, so, this is sort of my takes on it, I think, I think it, uh. Is a great rendering, uh, I think it, it would fit well and sort of elevate the area, um. That's kind of where, where I, but no specific questions.
Okay, um. So I, I like to answer more questions, so the, the reason why I'm talking about the above-ground fuel tank is shown on plans. So this is the opportune time to discuss it, during this site plan review, so the village does decide to do it. Apply for permit and you do it, instead of coming back as an amended site plan.
Sure.
So, that's the reason why I said probable.
I understand.
Would be a probable location, be a dedicated light pole, be above ground.
And like, like Adam said, I mean, um, almost every, uh, arena on our lakes has above-ground tanks. There's not a lot of landscaper, you know, pumpkins, you know, they all have. Safety, you know, save, so the other things in place that, that make it so much safer product than what we saw in the old days. Just a fifty-five gallon drum on stilts, so, um. That's, that's truly not one of my concerns with this property and, and I don't think that the, uh. Building itself with your, your waiver and what you're looking for on that for its look is an issue either, I. I get the fact that you're looking for something more generic with a, you know, a decent look that's gonna be there and be more. Useful for the product that you're gonna be putting out of there and, and functional, so I, I get that a hundred percent. Uh, the, the only issue I have, um. I would, I would prefer a wooden fence, I know the purpose for a chain link fence with slats, but it just looks institutional. And I don't think that's gonna help anybody in that neighborhood to make their property values be anything better than what they are now. I think it's gonna only, uh, be a detriment to them and, and what they have in place. And I, I do, and I am happy that this property is. Naturally elevated, um, it, where it's caused a lot of grief and anxiety on your side for water coming off of and runoff. I do feel, and that's why I was looking at your. Tobo and how you were presenting your water detention and, and its diversion. Will help you a lot more than what you're getting now, a hundred percent more. And I, I fully agree with you there, and I know that Dennis and the staff and everybody over there will help maintain and take care of that very well. Uh, to improve what you have. Um, the tree issue. We hold ourselves in such a high standard with everybody who comes into this village that it's, um. Very difficult, um, but I do understand that you're trying to maintain the trees that are already there, I counted. Roughly eighty-four or eighty-six trees that we're gonna be removing for the building. And that's fine. There's a ton of trees that are there that are, you know, first growth over, you know, probably eighty years old and more. So I understand leaving those in place for the neighbors, it's gonna be a much better landscape than removing them all and putting in fresh trees. Which is gonna be not beneficial to you guys at all. Um, and you really can't, and this isn't like a flat space, so you, it's not like with a landscape buffer, you're gonna do a berm. And berm is naturally there, I mean, it is already elevated. To, to add something like that is not gonna, it's only gonna encapsulate what you can't do. The water, and then you'd have to pipe it out of that space, and it would be a single landfill position where it's gonna come out and it's gonna affect the worst. So, you're in a catch twenty-two, I get where you're coming from, I understand what you're trying to achieve. It's gonna benefit you with the water under those circumstances, if they do something more to add, just some more vegetation. It's not gonna benefit you on the water side, it's gonna hurt you, because they have to pipe it to the exact location where it's coming out now. And then you're just gonna have a single point running out onto your, into your space and in your backyards, that's not gonna help you at all. Um, SMC is very specific, we have to run the water to where it's going, it has to go to the wetlands beyond that space. That's why they're able to divert it slightly over to the east from you, and that's gonna help you a lot. Um. If we can just have something in there saying that you're gonna add some trees to some areas in the future, that would certainly help. Alleviate some of the trees that you're taking away, but those are in the center of the property where the building is, so. If you can add some nice vegetation, some good maples and whatever else, oats would be great. You know, for future to help give a better look for the residents, that would be nice. From there, uh, is there anything from the public that you'd like to add to this discussion, you've heard it all, we've gone back and forth. Um, please come on out, state your name, give your comments, everything will be considered and heard, thank you.
Again, I'm Stuart Walsh, uh, seventy-sixth, another one's Antioch. Um, I have a question about this fence. Um. In your comments, you talked about a perimeter fence, is that on the boundary?
No, it's around the pavement.
Okay, around the building and the paved areas where the fence is located.
Outside of the setback areas.
Okay. Um, I know Dennis, the, uh, the village board had asked you to do a fuel saving study. Has that been done?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, oh, what lives in the silo? I'm afraid that when the silo comes down, rats and mice and cats and dogs and everything else are gonna come into my stuff. Could it be exterminated before they take it down?
Not a, not a, not a bad thought, make note of that, Dennis.
That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I do, I do have a comment, after that, uh. That, that one discussion there, Stuart gave us with, with the fence, now. With the way the layout of the plan shows on page seventy-nine, if you guys wanna take a look at it. Um, the fence is actually very far away from all the residents, so it's not really, and they're, they're way. Down in elevation. That is not typically under this circumstance, they're not gonna be, you'll even see that. It's not gonna hide anything, it's just there for security at this moment.
And that's one thing I'd like to add.
And wind, so that's why the slats are in there, wind and other things.
Yeah, so if any IPD wants to drive past, there's a wooden fence, they're not going to physically be able to see in. So we were looking at security purposes, at least from North Avenue, you'd be able to see into the site, so. If somebody was in there messing around, breaking stuff, you could see from the road. Plus, the chain link will be a lot easier.
But you'd be using, uh, slats in, in the chain link.
They do have like a privacy, um.
Right, and that would be used on the west side and the south side towards the residence presently under. This construction. I mean, uh, what's the distance at this time from the property line to the chain link fence? God, it's gotta be. Well, one shows three hundred and ninety-nine feet to the corner of the building from the west. I would say you're thirty-one, sixty-two, sixty-two feet off of that. So three hundred and. And, uh, let's just call it a rough distance, three hundred and thirty, three-twenty. To the chain link fence from the west, the south. So, the south is probably one twenty-five to the property line? No, it's more than that.
If, if you look at the, at the table that I provided with the setback apartments, the front yard is no fence, so that's a hundred and forty feet. The side yard east is seventy-six, so if you minus thirty for the roadway.
Yeah, I mean, we're, right now.
Forty-six feet.
Howard, we're pretty concerned about the south and to the west.
South is four hundred.
Right, that's a setback to there, but it's a setback to the, to the chain link fence.
To, you're roughly a hundred and seventy-five feet if I'm reading it correct.
Yeah, that's pretty close.
Yeah.
One seventy-five?
Yeah.
Like I said, the other side's probably three thirty, three twenty-five?
Three ninety-nine. Yeah.
Three twenty-five, we deduct for the road and for the other.
Three, three sixty?
Sixty. Yeah, okay.
And it's gonna be the hard one.
That's pretty far, and that's not gonna be noticeable. Not any of those scenarios. So that changes my opinion of wooden fence versus a chain link fence, in my eyes.
And you have to take into consideration, okay, probably forty-three, so.
Agreed.
Imagine looking into.
Agreed.
Very slow, so you won't see this.
You're not gonna see it. I, yeah, good. Ms. Sir, Brad, um, state your name and your address.
Uh, Richard Brzezinski, thirty-two West Eight Drive. I'm a vice president of the HOA at the Arborist, one more pretty.
Thank you.
Um, not blaming Howard because I know he wasn't asked to do the facts. But, and not that a major one is needed, but we're located just west of the Antioch Strangler Railroad Company. And when twenty-five or thirty cars are stopped for five or ten minutes, the CN Railroad. Is backing them up and they wanna get to work or wherever they're going, they're not going thirty-five miles an hour once that train is gone. And. If there is no easy access for the guys to get in and out. Of the new public works facilities. An area where they gotta go, right off of North Avenue, there's not a little lane built for them to. Can have a lot of ticked off people and potentially some vendor vendors, that's just my opinion, so should I put in a. Some, uh.
Speed pumps.
Speed pumps, I would suggest. Some sort of a deceleration acceleration lane on either side of the entry point to the public works facility. However many yards or feet that has to be, because you're gonna have a lot of angry folks. Pulling up on one another and Nelson is right there, I, I think there needs to be that. From the traffic standpoint, I know it's not downtown Chicago traffic, you know, cause I lived that for fifty-seven years. But, you know, people get anxious when they've been delayed five or ten minutes by a. By a train.
True.
Or two, or two, that's happened.
Or one that stops for an entire day.
That, that's accurate, you know, so, and you got metrics, so, I mean, that's, that's, those are my.
Thank you, Rich, anybody else who'd like to?
Jerry Nelson, seventy-one, Miss Vanderger. Thank you, Dennis, for your presentation, um, appreciate it, thank you, everybody for staying late to listen to us. Uh, just a couple of things here that I'd like to bring up, uh, one, with, with respect to the lighting, I didn't. When I came and looked at the plans, I didn't look to see what specs were for the lighting, if we're gonna put on. Uh, ball packs and, and lights and that, if we could either, uh, put down lighting or shielding on them so that it does keep it on the property. Or within property lines, so that they see that, that would probably help, uh, one is. To get, maybe to get rid of, get rid of one of your, your variants for your impervious surfaces, uh. Was there any consideration given to, uh, doing a lock consolidation between seventy-six and twenty North Avenue, just by the fence? And just do lock consolidation, but that way you're gonna get rid of that next, the impervious surface variance. Cause instead of about three acres, you're ready to shore some net, I think seventy-six, you said was five acres or six acres or something. And maybe less, but I think you get rid of the barriers, if you just combine the, you know, the lock consolidation. Uh, so, I, I wholeheartedly agree with both of you. The, the village has instituted ordinance in zoning and, and otherwise for people to follow, so that you make them. Following village and for the, for our own entity to come in and say that, well, we don't have the budget money, so we ju- we just don't wanna do it. That doesn't cut with me, what if I was anti-boil, I mean, it's not, sorry, I don't need the money to do everything I wanna do, but I wanna put up my building. We're gonna let them do that too, I mean, if you're gonna do that, then, then we should go back and just re, relook at all the zoning ordinances. And just get rid of the stuff we just don't wanna do, I mean, that, that's the whole reason there is that people do that. So that when you do cut down a tree, you do put up the tree, you replace that, uh, so I, I don't. To me, that's just not an exit circumstance, uh, using budget as, as a reason why we can't do something. That, that's just something the village needs to, the village needs to buck up, I don't know how you're doing it with your bonding, this project or what you're doing to. Or taking, you know, combination, taking money out of your price funds and that, whatever, but, uh, that. Not having the budget to do it is just not an excuse to not, not comply with our own ordinances. The, uh, the cell dome, I don't know how, how tall was that, how many. The, uh, the salt dome, I don't know how, how tall was that, how many tons was that?
Uh, I think we have about seventeen hundred right now, we, we were two thousand on. I don't know that I'm saying.
So you went thousand twenty to two thousand seventy, how much do you think in a year?
Uh, typically, well, we're typically carrying over six hundred tons and I range around a thousand, I mean, that's, I have to order.
So if you, so if you have a, if you have a season where you have to think next year's solid, you didn't use all of this year, you could be in trouble by downsizing.
That, that's, I wish.
Point exactly, we're. You're going, the, the village, you're, they're going to, you're making a skip on this stuff and you have to be in trouble, um, two years down the road. And same thing with the fuel tanks, I mean, they all, you know, with your budget, can't do that. If you put those through the contract and lease and you put them in now, the money you save is, that's, that's money in the pocket.
We do intend to run, kind of do it and prepare for the tanks, but the, the electrical and the installation of the tanks will not be coming.
Yes. I think it's foolish, but, uh, whatever. The, uh, landscaping to replace, we already talked about the trees and all that stuff. That, I agree, you know, they have that whole, the whole west side there that the trees are going to be left in. Uh, what happens if all of a sudden you have some trees and those trees and all of a sudden forty percent of them go away because of that, they're cut down. You know, then we don't have that, they don't have that buffering there and that's the whole reason we have the ordinance. You have to stop and if you leave them there and then over time, if you're going to do that, then meet the ordinance. And Howard, you mentioned something about the last one was the fire district and then, you know, have, have, have stuff done within six months. What, what things are we talking about not doing, what is that? The plan review process. I think it's six months? Oh, okay, that's just a placeholder.
For example, we have, uh, how do you call it? Marketplace, it's been approved, right, last year? We'll plan a survey yet because it's still being worked, it's more than six months. So I'm trying to curtail this, is this coming like regularity unfortunately? We're presenting this, we're doing this, we're doing this, and then we don't have IDON's permission, we can't plan the survey. We can't, uh, let your policy affect the building, so I'm trying to put some limits.
They get an approval from this board for that. You don't have a one-year plan?
One-year first, especially these people who need. But we're getting that.
See what else they have here, I think that might have been it, uh, street building type. I will agree with, I will agree with Dennis on that. It's, he's going, he's, you, you think, if he doesn't have budget money now, put in a bomb with salt dome and all that, why would he start replacing fence panels when those trucks start backing to that, it's a lot easier to replace chain links. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make some comments? All right, just a second, um, so photometrics. That's been proposed, it's on here and we, we stick to the standard of, of what we have for the village for photometrics. It doesn't, uh, project past the property lines thereof. This is actually shorter than the property lines, I think you bring it to the fence line. So it's on a tighter scale than, than the whole property, so it's, it's not projecting there out and, and we, 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 uh, in, instituted a we called it dark skies ordinance many years ago, so nine, everything is ninety-degree down and shielded, so it, it's done in a way to make it, uh, better for the neighbors, so on and so forth. Prepared, I get, I get your point for the salt and for having the fuel tanks in place and the tree replacement, one thing I wanted to add to that, if we don't put the trees on this property, eighty-six of whom are being removed because of the building, that's eighty-six that we minimum, if it was two to one or three to one as the ordinance stated. Can we put that in an inventory to be used or committed to for use for our subdivisions in, uh, the workways as replacements for our subdivisions for future? So if a tree dies in their subdivision, we can replace that as the replacement cost to them, keeping it, helping out our subdivisions and residents.
Do I get credit for learning for the past several years?
Can I, can I, can I get credit for at least mentioning it? I know you've done it, but we've also, some, some subdivision have paid for, uh, half the cost or other things have been negotiated, but if we could do this as an inventory set aside and subdivisions know that this is going to help them.
And there's different programs out there, um, that hopefully can utilize. Morton Arboretum gives tree, Recon Matt's doing it, so maybe there's a way, it's not going to be a two-inch caliber tree, but even if I can plant a three-foot-high tree and get something out there, even in the area that is the buffer for when those mature trees do.
True.
And the life or, so, and try and just, yes, which many of them are.
Maybe that could happen now, sure, sure. But, I mean, if you're looking at eighty-six times three, that's, you know, it's a decent, it's a decent inventory, you can have a bell. Yeah, there's different.
If it's a box out there, you're getting zero.
I agree, I agree. We just won't notice that one.
And all, you get, you're going to get, uh, probably six to one.
I get it, I get it, but that, if that inventory can be used, and, and again, that's going to spread out over time. Because not every subdivision, you're going to have twenty trees go in a year, you have two, you know, three, maybe four, whatever, so it could, it could at least help for our residents, knowing that we're giving back to them too.
Start with the Arbers.
All right.
A, a tree.
Well loaded.
A tree line item in my book and, and I'll make sure that there is a portion that goes to trees that go in the parkway and.
Right, let's just make sure we, you know, bring that up to the board, village board, when, when this comes to them next, so. All right, um, that being said, anything in closing, Howard?
Yeah, I like to bring up again the, uh, the tree stuff. So me being me, I, I looked at the Kia, the Kia plan. I don't have the trees that were supposed to be proposed. In the staff report, my predecessor said, well, you know, they meet the, the tree ordinance, but they can't do it. The cannabis consume also doesn't have the trees that were taken down, that were replaced. So we're saying that, well, the village is doing something that shouldn't be done, but we have allowed it for other private I call it development.
We didn't give them, we didn't have permission to do that.
Right.
We can't enforce it.
Right, but the Kia.
A lot of times, we've, we can discuss this at, at another time with you especially, but with your predecessor, we didn't have the option. That was being done behind closed doors, we know it, we felt it. We, we've commented, all of us have commented on that. So, but, let's, let's just move forward with where we're at and, and say that we're going to try to.
At least Howard is transparent, he's asking clearly.
Take care, take care of it properly.
To that point, Howard, um, based on everything you said regarding chapter six and about the tree and our, 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 your, whatever committee, then we don't need to approve a waiver for the landscaping.
No, you have to approve the waiver for the landscaping criteria, which I just read the summary. You're not planting street trees in your parking spaces, the front yard. You're not planting trees along the side property line, just grass, maybe one or two trees, you should be planting more for linear, thirty feet, so many trees, so many shrubs. That's the site plan criteria.
I wrote a comment that the front line is keeping beneath the requirement.
Right, the front yard.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're creating a nice public works facility for the facade, the front looks nice, everything else, so so.
Okay.
But this Howard being transparent, he's being open, not hiding anything.
All right, at this time, I'll look for either an approval or a denial of twenty-five, uh, dash oh six with comments with, um, conditions, uh, or PZB, and twenty, PZB twenty-five oh seven. Approval or denial?
I'll make a motion for PZB twenty-five dash zero six, consideration for a special use to allow civic uses within the estate district for the creation of a new public works facility. A site plan review with two waivers that deal with the design standards and landscaping will, are also part of this approval. The subject property is located twenty North Avenue, uh, Antioch, Illinois, and the pin is zero two zero nine one hundred dash zero zero two. I move to approve it with the, um, stipulations outlined in both the in Howard's report.
With the conditions in Howard's report?
Yes. And I, I would definitely, I mean, maybe the Antioch Garden Club could help with some landscaping.
Any second.
Second.
Motion is seconded. Uh, Rocco.
Inlet, yes. Parsonsen?
Yes.
Vage?
Yes.
Mangan?
Yes.
Safer Chimski?
Yes.
Heard it.
Yes. Okay, separate item for approval or denial of PZB twenty-five dash oh seven.
I'm in motion, PZB twenty-five dash zero seven, consideration for two variances associated with the special use and site plan review for the new public works facility, which is located at twenty North Avenue, Antioch, Illinois, and the pin zero two zero nine one hundred dash zero zero two. The two variances include a proposed thirty percent maximum impervious area coverage and to allow a chain link fence with vinyl slats within a residential district. I agree.
Second.
With conditions, is that right in Howard?
Conditions and count and, uh, all right. Um, first and the second, uh, Rocco?
Sam Polcom?
Yes.
Parsonsen?
Yes.
Vage?
Yes.
Mangan?
Yes.
Safer Chimski?
Yes.
Heard it.
Yes. You two have the approvals, move forward. When will you be presenting for the village board?
Uh, the first round is August thirteenth.
August thirteenth, if you guys want to put it on your calendar, obviously they're going to want to hear your comments. They get their information from us, they get the background from us, they hear your comments, the police, it always comes better with your there to give them.
Now it starts at six thirty.
Six thirty, six thirty.
The cows and, we do the whole.
Thank you very much, uh, look for motion to adjourn.
adjourned.
So I do. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much, everybody.